Okay, let's try this again. As I just announced to the folks here present today, we have some new equipment, new software, microphones, screens, and quite a lot of new gadgets here. So if we have an issue, bear with us, we're gonna work through it. But good morning to all of you, we're glad to have you here. My name is Mike Terry. Welcome to this regular monthly meeting of the Cobb County Planning Commission. And just for the record, can you folks hear me out there? Is this coming through? I see some saying no and some saying yes. We're gonna, we're gonna keep going, so we might need to adjust this up just a little bit. The Planning Commission, for those that don't know, is an advisory board appointed by the Board of Commissioners. We investigate every zoning case or land use permit that comes to the county. It's our job to be sure that all the pertinent issues have been taken care of, and then we make a recommendation to the Board. The Board of Commissioners will have the final say-so, and they will rule on these cases at their regular meeting, which is in two weeks from today. And that date, John, what is it? Nineteenth?
It's not from today.
April nineteenth will be that hearing. So if you're here for a case today, and you're, especially if you're giving testimony, you'll need to be back in this chamber on the nineteenth at nine o'clock in the morning for that continuation. It's our custom, at this point, to invite various members of the clergy, the local clergy, to come and say a few words to us, or lead us in a prayer as they decide. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce to you Pastor Chaplain Stephen Sherrod. Stephen is a pastor at, senior pastor in fact, at the Cathedral International Church in Kennesaw. He's also one of our chaplains for Cobb County Police, so we're glad to have you here this morning.
Thank you.
When the pastor's finished with his comments and his prayer, we would invite Officer Ott from the Cobb County Police Department to come forward and lead us in our pledge of allegiance. When he comes forward, if you would stand as you're able, we'll take care of that. Pastor?
Chairman Terry, thank you so much for this honor. And once you pray with me. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your manifold and many abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you, oh God, as well, for the freedom to embrace you, or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless, abounding, and amazing graceful nature. In the Scriptures, you have said that the citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our president, our governor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern and to listen intently amid the conflicting issues and interest of our times. That you would grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people and our community, a keen thirst for righteousness, confidence in good and fitting things, the ability to work together in harmony and even in honest disagreement. I pray that you would grant all personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda that's set before us today, and please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our great and beloved county, a county whose mission and desire it is that this would be a wonderful, incredible place to live and to work here in Cobb County. It is in your most blessed name, which is above every name, that I pray. Amen. (Inhales) One, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this morning, as it always is, will be our consent agenda. These are cases that the Planning Commission and the zoning staff have fully investigated, and are, and they are satisfied that all the pertinent issues have been resolved and for which there is no known opposition. The zoning administrator, Mr. John Peterson, John's raising his hand right here to my left, will read the cases into the record. He will ask if there's anyone present wishing to comment on that particular case. If there is, we may elect to pull the case from the consent agenda and then hear it in its regular numerical sequence. Next, we will hear the cases that were either held or continued from a previous meeting. And lastly, we will hear the regular cases again in their numerical sequence. Applicants will be asked to identify themselves, come forward and be sworn in before they present their case. Then the opposition likewise will be asked to identify themselves, be sworn in for the record. When your case number is called, please present yourself to our officer of the day. And today, it's Ms. Kim Wakefield. Kim, raise your hand. Kim is on the front row there. She's our officer that will take care of the swearing-in. She also maintains a book we'd like you to sign, so we get the correct spelling of your name. So do that for us if you will. The most important thing I can tell you this morning is, we have what we call the ten-minute rule. Please be aware that every side, both sides, pro and con, gets ten minutes total to present their cases. We need to do that, otherwise we'd be here till midnight with every single zoning hearing that we have. So please be mindful of the length of your comments. If you stand up and speak for nine minutes, the person behind you gets one. We try to enforce that as strictly as we can, so bear with us on that and just be aware. When you're speaking, there is no rebuttal process at that time. That means that's your time to talk to us. If we have questions for you, we may call you back up later to clarify a point, but that will be your time to present to us. Those are my directions at this point. John, what do you have for us?
I thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn, will not be heard today. That's rezoning case Z-30, 180 Holdings LLC. That case has been withdrawn, will not be heard. Mr. Chairman, Board, there are two cases that, in which the applicant is asked may be withdrawn also. First case is rezoning case Z-105 of 2015. The applicant is asking this be withdrawn without prejudice, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Okay, Kevin, come on up. Go ahead, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. And for the record, I'm Kevin Moore, here on behalf of the applicant EAH acquisitions for this application for rezoning. And I'm here to request that the application be withdrawn without prejudice. There hasn't been a lot of work involved with this application, but at this time we need to withdraw it without prejudice and request that from you. There are a variety of factors that are involved with that decision by the applicant, but that is where we are today, and we would respect the request. You grant that request.
This request came in late yesterday, and I know that a lot of people did an awful lot of work on this. Edward Andrews in particular, Kelly Rhino from that company, of course, the attorney for Edward Andrews, and lots of people that are sitting before you up here. But the request came in late, and I asked Kevin if he would please try and get the word out to the neighborhood, to the school next door, to the neighborhood behind, and the church across the street. I know that phone calls were made. I know there may be some people here today who did not get that word, and we apologize for that, but these things happen. This case is being withdrawn without prejudice. Do we have any comments at all? John, anything else on this? Kevin, that pretty much covered it?
That's, that's true.
Okay, let's go with, I'm fixing to. Without any further comment then, I'm gonna make a motion that we allow Z-105 to be withdrawn without prejudice. Can I get a second?
A second.
Let's go with Skip. We have a second from Skip, all in favor of that motion, so we will allow that withdrawal. Thank you.
Thank you.
What else, John?
Additionally, Mr. Chairman, there is one SLUP on today's agenda which the applicant is asking be withdrawn also. That's S-L-U-P three, Dobbins Mill LLC. Mr. Moore does represent that case too, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Kevin?
Yes. A lucky morning. Again, for the record, I'm Kevin Moore, here on behalf of the applicant and owner, Dobbins Mill. And what we're presenting today, and I've got a letter to do that, so it can be a formal part of the record, I'll hand to the clerk. And what we're requesting, number one, it's not a request, because we're simply withdrawing the special land use permit application. That special land use permit application, or the SLUP portion of this application, requested approval of a proposed waste transfer station. Only with a special land use permit or SLUP can a waste transfer station be approved and permitted for, for property in Cobb County. By this action, we are withdrawing or removing that aspect of this project, the waste transfer facility, from the proposal. And by submitting that letter, which a copy has been provided to those who are interested in this application as well, the waste transfer facility will be removed from consideration in this project by withdrawal of the SLUP application. At the same time though, there's an underlying rezoning application for this property, which is zoned, the property in its entirety is zoned, general, commercial, mobile home park, and R-20. So it still has a pending rezoning application that's underlying this. So we'd like to request that application, the rezoning application that's underlying this request, be continued so that the applicant and owner can go back, we can evaluate the situation, and resubmit an industrial site plan, and seeks purely an industrial zoning for this proposed project. We believe that can be done in a very short amount of time, and therefore request a continuance to your May agenda, and we'll be sure to have that plan submitted to staff for their review, as well as distributed to and discussions with any adjacent area of residents that we've been discussing this project with all along. So with that, we're withdrawing the SLUP application, which removes the waste transfer facility from consideration, and then requesting from the Planning Commission consideration for continuance to your May agenda, so for us to pursue simply an industrial development and industrial zoning for this property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. This is in?
Sure.
Mr. Porter's district. Any further, any comments?
Well, I certainly support the withdraw of the SLUP, because that was problematic, I would say. And I do think it's reasonable to give them until our May hearing to revise the site plan, as the site plan we have before us includes that waste transfer station. So I would support that thing. Should we ask if there's any objection in the audience to continuing, or?
Okay, why don't we do that? John, why don't you go ahead and take care of that for us?
Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to rezoning case Z-16? Please raise your hands.
Okay, keep them up, and we'll get a count of those in opposition to this case. Just keep them up until we get the count, please.
Let the record show there are eleven people here opposed to rezoning case Z-16.
Now, the SLUP is being totally withdrawn. We really don't need any vote on that. We just need a motion to take care of that. But the SLUP will not be heard. A special land use permit is required if you have a waste transfer station. They have concluded, as you heard Mr. Moore say, that that is not gonna go forward. So that's being totally withdrawn. We don't need any comment on that. Anything else, Carl?
You know, as I think about it, I don't, it would be awful hard to hear this case today, because we don't have a site plan that goes with it. So I really don't think, you know, as much as I hate that people came here to speak about it, we don't really have the information necessary to evaluate the application and make a decision on it. So I really think a continuance is the best, you know, route to go with this case. And that, and it looks like everybody's nodding their head with that.
Do we need a separate motion, or just include it?
We need two motions.
We need two. Okay, go ahead, y'all.
Okay. First motion, I'll make a motion that S-L-U-P three be withdrawn.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, all in favor of that motion? So the SLUP will be withdrawn, okay?
Okay. And second, I make a motion that we continue case Z-16 till our May hearing.
We have a motion and a second there. Any further discussion, all in favor of that motion? So that's exactly what we'll do. Thank you very much. Right up, John.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Board, there are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued by the staff, will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-98 of 2015, Columbia Properties Capital LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the May third, 2016 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-98 of 2015 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-106 of 2015, CRP Oakmont Skyline Two LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the May third, 2016 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-106 of 2015 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-18, Pope and Land Enterprises Incorporated. That case was continued by the staff until the May third, 2016 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-18 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-31, Phoenix GRP LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the May third, 2016 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-31 will not be heard today. Lastly, S-L-U-P five, Verizon Wireless V-A-W LLC, was continued by the staff until the May third, 2016 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLUP five will not be heard today. And with that, Mr. Chairman, well, we've got one more thing here. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, please put your cellphone on silent mode, if you have a cellphone. The ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations, so if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent mode. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for April first, 2016. Rezoning case Z-27, Mr. and Mrs. Charles Adewun, request rezoning from R-30 to R-20 for the purpose of three residential lots in landlot 289 of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the west side of Corner Road, north of Echo Mill Drive. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on February fourth, 2016, with district commissioner approving minor modifications, fire department comments and recommendations, storm and management division comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, department of transportation comments and recommendations, waiver of the required public road frontage for lot one from seventy-five feet to sixty-six feet, and the zero feet for lots two and three, with the accompanying lot size reduction of lots two and three from required eighty thousand square feet to twenty-six thousand one hundred and nineteen square feet and forty-two thousand eight hundred and forty square feet respectively, and the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA thirty-six seventy-one thirteen for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-27? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. L-U-P four, Covered Bridge Montessori School, requests a land use permit renewal for the purpose of providing daycare services in landlots fifty, fifty-one, ninety-four, ninety-five of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the west side of Hurt Road, north of Plantation Road. Staff recommends approval for twenty-four months, subject to the maximum number of students permitted by state and fire codes. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to L-U-P four? Let the record show there's no one opposed. L-U-P five, Maria Claudia Ortega, requests a land use permit renewal for the purpose of a daycare in landlots nine forty-nine and nine fifty of the sixteenth district. Property is located on the east side of Allgood Road, north of Camelia Drive. Staff recommends approval for twenty-four months, subject to the hours to be Monday through Friday only, from seven AM to six PM. Infants up to pre-kindergarten age children only, no overnight stays for the children, no outdoor signs, only one employee is allowed, maximum of ten children unrelated to the owner, and the district commissioner to approve the landscape and fencing plan. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to L-U-P five? There is one person opposed, Mr. Chairman, so we'll pull that off, consent, and hear it in its normal order. L-U-P six, Dathan Johnson, requests a land use permit renewal for the purpose of a pet dealer in landlots seven sixty-nine and seven seventy of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the east side of Shady Side Road, north of Hurt Road. Staff recommends approval for twenty-four months, subject to the maximum of one customer per week on-site, maximum of fifteen dogs on the property, maximum of three letters per, three letters per year, and storm and management division comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to L-U-P six? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Mr. Peterson, let me go back to land use permit number five. We had one person in opposition. I see you sitting back there. I don't know what your issue is. Frequently, these are issues that can be resolved just by talking to the applicant, and I'm just curious if you would be willing to go out back with the applicant, tell him what your problem is, and see if there's something that might be, some accommodation that might be made. Otherwise, we'll be glad to hear it. Would you be willing to do that? Why don't you folks go out back and talk about it real quick? And let's just see what your issues are. While you're doing that, we're gonna move forward. If we need to put it on the agenda for regular hearing, we'd be glad to do that. But let's see if we can work that. Okay, John, what's next?
That completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman. I think Commissioner Gunn threw one in.
We do have one item that I think we want to add to the consent agenda.
Yes. Z-28, the applicant is requesting rezoning from R-20 to NRC. At our work session, we agreed that we wanted to have this, if it were to be approved, for this use only, for a daycare center. The applicant has agreed to that, and that in fact is in the stipulation letter. And so I would request that we put this on the consent agenda.
Second.
We don't need a motion for that, we're just gonna add it, Mike.
You're gonna add it, and then I'll read it in, we'll call for opposition then.
So we do need a motion to add it?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to add. We have a second, all in favor of adding it to the consent agenda.
I'd like to add it with, with two stipulations.
Okay.
Bear with us on our new system here, we're stumbling through.
I wanna complete my motion now.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, we add it to the consent agenda with two stipulations.
First, just add it.
Okay, we'll just add it.
First add it, and then I'll read it in, and then add your conditions.
Okay.
Rezoning case Z-28, Fatima Willoughby, request rezoning from R-20 to NRC for the purpose of a child daycare academy in landlot two sixteen of the twentieth district. The property is located on the west side of Kennesaw-DW Road, and on the east side of Stylesborough Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-28? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Okay, and then the two stipulations I'd like to add in would be, it's, it's subject to the letter stipulations of the zoning department dated March eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, and all staff comments.
Okay, so now we have a motion to add Z-28 to the consent agenda with the additions that Skip mentioned. We have a second. Any further discussion, all in favor of the motion? Okay, so that's what we'll do, five zero. Thank you very much. That in the, on the consent agenda?
Chairman, I have to make a question that we're putting the consent agenda, for the exception, that'll be five. One second.
Okay, but those folks are still talking out back, so we'll go ahead and do that. Consent agenda as presented, with that one item being pulled off, all in favor of that. We have a second, all in favor. Okay, so that's what we'll do. Thank you very much. Okay, John?
Yes, sir. Moving into the regular agenda, rezoning case, or actually, moving into the continued Rezoning case Z-87 of 2015, Fuqua Acquisitions Two LLC, request rezoning from R-30 and R-20 to NRC, RM twelve, and RSL, for the purpose of residential senior living and retail in landlots seven sixty-nine and seven seventy of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the west side of Spring Hill Parkway, north side of Paces Ferry Road, east side of Spring Hill Road, on the southwest side of Simpson Road. The applicant is present. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to rezoning case Z-87? Let the record show there are two people opposed. Can I get a show of people here who are in support of rezoning case Z-87? Please raise your hands.
Yeah, just keep them up, folks, so we can get an accurate count.
I've got a question.
Put them up, and keep them up, please. I see you're putting them down. Let's be sure we get a count.
Twenty-three.
I have twenty-three.
Do you feel like it's accurate, you need to do it again? Let's do it again, folks. Some of you put them up and down. Put them up and leave them up until you know you've been counted, please. If you're in favor of Z-87, let's see your hands. Thank you.
(Inaudible).
This is the most recent plan. If you're in, if you're in favor, if you're in favor of the all-residential, let's see your hands, please.
I think that changes the opposed number, too. You may wanna ask that again, John.
Let the record show there are twenty-five people here in support.
Now, to, to be fair, I just heard John say something that I think is accurate. Let's ask one other time, anyone opposed to Z-87, the most current plan? Let's see your hands one more time, please. One, yeah, there's several. Let's get those in the back. Put them up, keep them up. If you put them up and down, we don't get your count. We're talking about opposition to Z-87. Are you opposed to the most recent plan for Z-87?
Seven.
Seven.
We'll correct the record to show there's seven people opposed.
Seven opposed, twenty-five in favor.
All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
If you're in opposition to Z-87 and you wish to speak, come on up and let's get you sworn in. If you're not sure you wanna speak, let's go ahead and get you on the record, sworn in. You don't have to, if you change your mind, that's fine. Now, while those folks are getting sworn in, and before John speaks, let me, let me just remind folks, we do have a pretty good crowd here today. We have several cases that I know are contentious. It's very important that we maintain decorum here. I'd like to remind everybody and let you know that I would really appreciate it if you would be respectful in your behavior. Shouting out, applauding, waving signs, all of that serves no purpose whatsoever. We don't like for that to happen, so please be mindful of that. We'd like to see you be respectful of each other, and I appreciate your understanding. Once your case is finished today, if you choose to leave, that's just fine. Please do so quickly and quietly, and if you wanna discuss the case further, do so out in the hall, not in this chamber, because we're gonna move quickly to the next case, and we are being televised, so we'd appreciate that. Thank you. John, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, for the record, my name is John Moore. Whose name doesn't appear in the agenda, but I wanted to explain that what has happened since the advent of this case some time ago, Fuqua Enterprises has stepped aside, and Brooks Chadwick is coming forward to carry this, this application forward as the developer. And you will note in our stipulation letter, which is dated the twenty-third of March, we didn't reference Brooks Chadwick as the applicant, which you normally see, but as the developer. So we're binding the developer, since Fuqua will go away when this is, if this is, becomes approved, an approved project. And we are, have deleted this application, as you saw on the screen. It was originally to be rezoned to NRC, which is neighborhood retail, commercial, RM twelve, and residential senior living. We have withdrawn the, the NRC or, and the RSL categories, so we're rezoning only to RM twelve. This is a total residential plan, there is no retail or other uses, other than the pure residential sixty-seven proposed townhomes. And Mr. Todd Thrasher and Mr. Dave Clapper with principals with Brooks Chadwick are here today. And I would like to thank also Frank Savini, who's the president of Paces Homeowners Alliance, for working with us and getting communications out to the community. We had a, a community meeting on March the seventeenth to review all of this, and to go over the plan we were proposing, and he was very instrumental in getting the word out, and we had a very good attendance, I'd say seventy, seventy-five people there at least. So I thank him for that. And then Mr. Bill Janty, who is the president of the Homeowners Association of the Estates subdivision immediately adjacent to us, that worked with us on our stipulations and, and the residents in his subdivision. So thanks to those two people. This is a, if I could point to the, yeah.
Site plan.
Thank you, Kenny. This is the property, it's a little over six acres, it's currently a church. This is Spring Hill Parkway along this side, this is Paces Ferry Road, and this is Simpson Road here. And this is the Estates Lane property that's located immediately adjacent to us, and then there's a school to the rear. And the entrance will be off Simpson Road. The detention is here, this, this property, and as the topo or topography goes, goes down from here to the, to the rear. So that's where the detention is located. And in discussing, there's a twenty-five foot buffer along this border with the subdivision. In discussing, we had initially proposed a landscape buffer there, and in talking with them, they, they think that there could be some trees that can be saved, that are good trees, and then we would clean up the, the underbrush. So we changed that to a the underbrush. So we changed that to a natural and enhanced buffer and try to preserve the trees that we can preserve that are on the line or close to it, which would go here. The buffer narrows to ten feet here because of these parking spaces that are required, and it goes back to twenty-five feet, all the way back to the rear of the property. We also are going to fence this either with a wrought iron fence or a six-foot solid wooden fence. There are some fences. Some homeowners have fences, and we're going to set ours back inside the property line to allow us to be able to maintain our fence and them to be able to maintain their fence. So it won't be jam up one to the other fence-wise. And we've also provided in our stipulation letter that we will let the fence meander to avoid trees if we have to do that. In other words, it won't have to be in a straight line. It can meander back and forth. And of course, we will then preserve, what we can preserve, this good tree growth, and then we will enhance that to provide a screening buffer and the fencing. And we've agreed also to move our detention as far to the, towards Spring Hill Road as we can and still comply with Cobb County stormwater requirements. While I'm up here, some of these units are rear-loaded and some are front-loaded. These, which in this case is a very good thing, because these units in this location, along the frontage of Simpson and Paces Ferry, are front-loaded, I mean rear-loaded, excuse me, and serviced by an alley. And the good part about that is that when you look from the street, you will see the fronts of these units, so it's much more attractive. And these are all for-sale units. They are, this is not a rental project. This is a for-sale or to-be-owned project. These homes will be a minimum of twenty-one hundred square feet, ranging up to thirty-five hundred and greater, and in the price range of the five-hundreds to the seven-hundreds and greater. And there were some questions in some emails and at the meeting about how we came up with the price and can we support that price. We have two examples of what we have done in past projects that Brooks Chadwick has been involved with. One on Johnson Ferry Road, the Perkins property now called Cobblestone Manor. When we did that, the range of square footage range was twenty-two hundred to thirty-five hundred, and most of those units ended up being bigger, and that's why the range is in there. The market determines the size of these units, what people want, and therefore the price. And we announced in that that it'd be in the mid-four range, and the first one that sold there sold for six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we've underestimated every time, and it appears that these townhome communities occupy their own value despite what's around. That project's located next to a shopping center. The other one is Indian Hills. We had a townhome project that were, that was only two stories in height, and it was surrounded by some older townhomes at much less value, and we said those would be in the three hundreds, and the first one sold in there for six hundred and nine thousand. So the point being that there is a demand for these, and what we've seen the demand be is for young professionals and empty nesters, which is quite a combination. There are no amenities, so we don't expect families. There may be one or two, but this is not a children's place to be. This is for those two groups, ease of access to work because of the location, and we think this is going to be done very well. So I think we can justify what we said about the price, and these will be elevation-wise, four-sided architecture, which means all the way around. There wouldn't be any side that's all hardy plank or any other material. It'll be a varied material. And these are pictures of the units that were done at Cobblestone Manor on Johnson Ferry, and these will be very similar to the ones that were done there. A maximum of three stories in height, elevators as an option, we expect. Most people will take the elevator. Some younger people will not because of the cost of the elevator and the maintenance, but it'll certainly be there as an option. But this is the quality of the structures that we expect these to be, and we are stipulating that, and the final elevations will be approved by the district commissioner. We're quickly running out of time. I wanted to address something, and Mr. Chairman, if I could have a little extra time, I got one person that wants to speak for about two minutes when I get done. I'm going to skip some of the stuff that I have. These all have two car garages, and all have also two car pads next to the garage that you can park two additional cars. So it's not just the garage and no other parking. Plus, we've agreed, of course, to comply with the guest parking requirements that the fire marshal has. And this will have a mandatory homeowners association that will be in charge of all the grounds, the common areas, the yards, everything for a fee, and all the homeowners will be mandatorily a member of that. All the landscaping along the frontage will be approved by the arborists. If you have seen Cobblestone Manor on Johnson Ferry, for example, you'll see the type landscaping that they put in. It's very nice, and this will be very nice. And we expect to do the brickstone entry with the landscaping at the entrance, and then as cobblestone is, this will have some fencing and some landscaping instead of building a wall around. It won't have a wall around the entire unit. I think I've been through the buffer part. We're certainly here to answer any questions. I wanted to also state in the stipulation letter, if I can make, in paragraph six, where we talk about elevations to remove, there is in the one, two, third line down, a material called board and batten that we've agreed to take out. That, we will remove that from the list of approved materials for this. Obviously, we are excluding anything having to do with vinyl. And I'm going to redo the stip letter after this meeting anyway to clear all this up. And one of the things I will clear up will be that portion, because in the beginning of that paragraph, it talks about it being front and sides, and later on I say four-sided. So it's clearly four-sided. I want to make sure that that is understood. Also, as to the existing church structure, an additional stipulation to give to the clerk, I typed it out for you, would be stipulation number thirty-five, and would be the church structure shall be secured within thirty days of the closing of the property and shall be demolished within sixty days of issuance of a land disturbance permit by Cobb County. And I think that covers it. As I say, we are happy to answer any questions that you might have concerning the application and the proposed development. I'm going to ask Mr. Bill Jancy come up and speak for just...
This has been a long time coming. It's quite a complicated case, so we're going to let this extra time be added in, and we'll give that same amount of time to the opposition. So, Mr. Jancy, give us your name for the record, please.
Sure. Good morning. My name is Bill Jancy. My wife and I and our three kids live at thirty-five oh five Estates Lane, and I'm speaking here this morning as president of the Old Vining Estates Estates HOA. As Mr. Moore mentioned, we are the subdivision closest to the church property, and in fact, five of our twelve homes directly border the church property, including my own. According to Zillow, our homes range in value from seven hundred thousand dollars to over nine hundred thousand dollars, and I'm here today, along with many of my fellow HOA members, to tell the planning commission that our subdivision fully supports Ashen Woods' proposed rezoning to develop as many as sixty-seven high-end townhomes on the church property. Our primary reasons are we believe this development will preserve and potentially enhance the value of our HOA's homes as well as the value of neighboring homes. Secondly, the residential-only rezoning will further confirm Spring Hill Parkway as the historic dividing line between commercial, on the other side of Spring Hill Parkway, and residential on our side. A precedent I want to stress that many of our HOA's homeowners had in mind when we purchased our homes. Lastly, I would like to mention our HOA has worked in good faith with John Moore and Todd Thrasher on some revisions to the stipulation letter that was submitted March twenty-third. To prevent confusion, given the shortened timeline to this hearing, our revisions have not been included in your documents, but we have been assured by John Moore and Todd Thrasher that the revisions will be incorporated along with any revisions you may have prior to submission to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jancy. Was there one other that wanted to speak? Okay, come on up. Just give us your name and tell us what you'd like us to know.
Mr. Chairman, other members of the planning commission, my name is Frank Savini. I am the president of the Paces Homeowners Alliance. It's my privilege and honor to be before you to speak on behalf of what Bill just mentioned as the president of his HOA and the many homeowners throughout the Paces Homeowners Alliance area. I want to thank Mr. Moore. Working with him in the past, as the good pastor had mentioned earlier, he and I've had honest disagreements. We're on the same side in this particular issue, and it's an issue very crucial and very important to the community. Going back to the original plan, this would have been an epicenter that would have crumbled home values in the area, and as Mr. Jancy mentioned, would have disturbed what is the Regional Activity Center on the eastern side of Spring Hill Parkway, would enable that actually to come within the heart of our community. We fully support this plan. We feel like it will improve home values, and I would like to add that when the vote was taken, we had, there is some confusion because the original Fuqua plan, as far as what it represented, was put up on the board, and I had a gentleman that came up saying, you know, we just voted in the back because we were so opposed to that, but we are not opposed to the new plan. So while it may be unusual, I would request that after, if another vote could be taken so that the appropriate actual number who are in favor and the appropriate number who are opposed could be properly accounted for. We do feel like the price of the land has a very important factor with this. If you recall, the price of the braves, they paid a six hundred thousand dollars per acre for a very high-intense use. This land now is going to be priced somewhere from what we understand, eight hundred thousand or above for what's a hundred percent residential. And just like, just like the high tide dries all boats, this is a situation where the high price of the land, the high price point of the townhomes, will rise the home values of those around us as opposed to what would have been the original plan of Z eighty-seven, eight, nine months ago. So we fully endorse this. We do hope that, encourage the planning commission to please recommend this to the Board of Commissioners. We've also addressed some issues with the stipulations. We've gone, the board has gone through those one by one. We feel like they're more than adequate, but we also would like your expertise with the recommendations that have come forward to tweak that, fine-tune it, so that without delay, we can proceed with Z eighty-seven. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Frank. We're going to need to close this. Do we have one more? Now, we haven't gotten to the opposition yet, okay?
Thirty seconds. You're in favor.
Well, I understand you're in favor. You have something new to add?
Yes.
Very quickly, very quickly.
Good morning. I apologize for the casual. I didn't expect opposition.
Give us your name.
David Soto. So just very quickly, I want to say, I live right across the street on Orchard from Spring Hill. I'm very much in favor of this. I know you guys don't deal with traffic issues, but I think something residential going in here will have the least impact on the whole Vinings Heights neighborhood, right across the street, directly across the street. And my personal home right now is on Orchard. Currently, the bridge at the other end of Orchard is demolished. You probably know. So now we actually get the sense of what living in this nice, quiet neighborhood is like and should be. And I believe that something residential going here like this plan is really the only way to maintain as close to a natural neighborhood environment compared to anything else that would go in the potentially commercial that would be more traffic-y. I've been a resident of Vinings Heights since nineteen eighty-seven, so I've got a vested interest, and also part of my life has been to buy, transform, and resell homes in my own neighborhood. So I'm the first one to sell in the two hundreds, three hundreds, four hundreds, five hundreds, six hundreds, and seven hundreds in my own neighborhood, and this is a neighborhood of ranches. And now I have a home that will be priced in the eight hundreds. So I have a very vested personal interest in seeing this, and I didn't plan on speaking, but I didn't think there would be opposition. So when I saw there might be, I thought I would tell you my personal story.
Okay, thank you, David, very much.
Thank you.
We're going to close this section of the hearing, and we'll open it up now to the opposition, so let's hear from them at this time. Opposition Z eighty-seven.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Give us your name, please.
My name is Mike Smith. I am also a resident of West Lane Drive, and my opposition is not in total to the development. I have some opposition to some of the specific stipulations. Mr. Moore has already addressed one of those that I had expressed, and I greatly appreciate that. That was stipulation six with the board and batten construction. I have a couple other issues. I genuinely appreciate Mr. Moore's enthusiasm for the pricing of the properties. There has been a tremendous amount of discussion presented by VHA, Vinings Homeowners Association, regarding pricing of these properties. It is my contention that while some of that communication came out with pricing in the high six hundreds, Mr. Moore, I do understand that this could be a very hot area. I don't think that that's going to be obtainable with the square footage of the homes. My assessment of townhome sales in the area, now granted, older homes, does not support a three hundred dollar a square foot price for a townhome. Ultimately, who determines the price is the market, as Mr. Moore said, but also the banks. If the banks won't loan, they won't sell. My solution or my proposal to this is a stipulation that brings the square footage of the homes up from twenty-one hundred square feet and adds elevators. Again, if the target market is for those that do not have children, we're talking about older people. If they're all built with elevators and they all have a little bit more square footage, I think the target price as presented by the VHA is definitely obtainable. This originally was slated to be a six hundred, high six hundreds property. Mr. Moore said this morning that it would be five hundred to seven hundred and fifty, certainly elegant homes, no problems, but I'd like to get a chance to get the community to understand the disparity between what was presented today at five hundred to seven fifty and the high six hundreds in terms of pricing. So I'd strongly recommend a square footage increase to somewhere around three thousand for the homes. The second thing that I have a serious issue with is the setback on the face on Simpson Road and Paces Ferry. The main entrance to the development is in an area where the setback is ten feet. It's a very narrow entrance, and although the proposal is not to have this for single, for homes for younger couples with children, there's nothing to stop that. People can move into this neighborhood with children. School buses are not going to be able to access this property. The main pickup point for kids in this neighborhood is going to be at the entrance to the development. With a ten-foot setback, sixty-seven units, a hundred and twenty car trips probably in the morning as people are trying to get to and from work, to and from school, a ten-foot setback, to me, is a disaster waiting to happen. There's not enough room for vision down Simpson Road. There's not enough room for kids to stand. There's not enough room for a green zone. There's not enough room for a fence, as was stipulated would be going around the property or discussed going around the property. The other sides of this property have a thirty-five-foot setback along Spring Hill and along the homes on Estates Lane. I would vigorously suggest that we end up with a thirty-five-foot setback on Paces Ferry and Simpson Road. The reason for this is that this is a suburban neighborhood still. The homes in that area have a setback approximately twenty-five, thirty-five feet from the road. I think that that solves a tremendous number of problems and safety issues regarding this particular development. Those are the two major items that I have with regards to opposition to this. I think that they're simple stipulations that maybe Mr. Moore and the developers can work with that would make the property, I think, a whole lot, much more in tune with the neighborhood and much more desirable from the neighborhood perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition or give us any other comments on Z eighty-seven? Several people raised their hands. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, not seeing and hearing any, then it's back to this board. Well, we could talk about this for quite a while. This has been going on a lot longer than many of you realize. I first heard about the church's desire to sell this property and move on. They're merging with another church or two back in 2014. That's when the rumors began flying, and that came from the church. The people in the church began talking in the community and among their, their neighbors about that possibility. Nothing happened then. Then in 2015, and I got a lot of calls. I got calls and I got emails, what's going to happen on that site? That's a big site, six acres, and I really would like to know. Well, we didn't know because nothing was brought to the county at that point. In 2015, though, that began to change as Fuqua Development and the church began discussions about what might could go there. And the first thing that we heard about was a senior housing project. We call that the zoning category, in fact, is RSL, Residential Senior Living. How many units? I inquired, and I was told maybe 140, 150. So that was the initial thing that was thrown out to the neighbors to at least begin thinking about and considering. No plan was shown to us, though, at that time. But that quickly began to change when the price of the land was as high as it was. Fuqua began to look at it and say, well, you know, we're going to have to do some things here to justify this very high price. And they came to us with a plan that included lots of retail. It included a, an organic grocer, 21,400 feet, square feet for one building, quite a bit of other retail, another 20-plus thousand square feet. They eventually added eight or nine townhomes on the western end to sort of buffer that area and pacify a few people that wanted that. And some other changes were made, but the bottom line was the RSL portion of it was going to be dominant at anywhere from three to five stories tall. There would have to be a large parking lot. Traffic issues began to be talked about. And while some wanted the retail, especially the, the grocery store, which could have been a Sprouts or a Whole Foods or something like that, most people were adamantly opposed to it for one big reason. They remembered what John mentioned and what Frank mentioned a few minutes ago, and that is that over time, over the last decade or more, county commissioners, including Joe Thompson, our former commissioner, current Commissioner Ott, and the BOC, had told people in the neighborhood, we do not want to see commercial creep down Paces Ferry, so we're going to do our best to keep commercial and retail away from this neighborhood. And the dividing line, as you heard, was going to be the Parkway, Spring Hill Parkway. Retail on, on that side and on the western side, we'll try to keep it at all residential. Well, they remembered those commitments, and that was very quickly brought to my attention, I can assure you. So that became the issue, and there were a few that still liked the first plan. There were many more that did not, and, and sides began to be taken. This has been very contentious, very. Well, later on, they added some additional houses to this. They picked up four or five houses that were adjacent and across Simpson and down Paces Ferry. Six acres became eight and a half, and it just continued to grow. When it continued to grow, the opposition continued to grow. I don't know what the final count is, but I know that in Frank Savini's area, there are seven or 800 homes. There are at least a dozen in Mr. Jancy's area, and there are some across the street that we heard from Mr. Soto that were just adamantly opposed to anything other than all residential. Fuqua began to see the handwriting on the wall. They knew that this was going to be a very, very difficult sale, but they were invested. They had put a lot of money into this. They had put a lot of time into this, and they felt an obligation to the church. And so they're, they're staying in for a while, at least. But then they were approached by Todd Thrasher and his group, Brooks Chadwick, and said, they said, we can do an all residential here, but we're going to have to make some changes. It's going to have to be a little higher density than what we would possibly normally do in a case like this, but they'll be very high-end. So all of this took place really over the last two or three months, this final plan. And I began, the whole time I'm looking at this, I'm listening to these people, Commissioner Ott's listening to these folks. It, it took me a while to get my hands around what was happening here, but my conclusion ultimately was that the positives of this latest plan outweighed the negatives by a considerable amount. Consider that the first plan ultimately was going to close Simpson Road. Now, I had a lot of emails from people who said, please don't let them close Simpson Road. We have cut through traffic there. We have people that come and go to work every morning, come home every afternoon. They didn't want to do that. The new plan leaves Simpson Road open. There's no retail involved, no commercial development. That was a positive as far as most people were concerned. Brooks Chadwick and his group, Ashton Woods, Todd Thrasher and that entire group, they have a reputation in Cobb County for being a very high-quality developer. We deal with them a lot. We see them a lot up here, and the BOC sees them a lot, Board of Commissioners. They build a very high-end, high-quality product. There was a question just raised by Mr. Smith. Can they really demand those kind of prices? I tend to think that they can. Everywhere they have built, as John told us, they have been able to command even higher prices than what they first quoted to the BOC and to the planning commission. Their landscaping department is among the very best in the county. You'll see some beautiful landscaping on this site if it's approved, so I think that's a positive. There won't be any five-story structures here, as we had on the first development. One lady told me she's going to look out her back window and see this looming, that was the word she used, looming over my house. That's not going to happen with this. I do think it will tend to have, of course, we never know, but tend to have a positive impact on price values and, and values of the homes in the neighborhood. I have seen this happen before. I think that that is true with the RSL and the other retail development, not necessarily true. So I think that's going to be a, a good thing. One lady was concerned and sent me multiple emails about the impact on Teasley, which is just right around the corner, Teasley Elementary. I don't really think this is going to have a big impact on Teasley. They are going to market these, and I'm going to ask John to come up in a minute and talk to us about the marketing, but they're not going to market these to families. This is not a family development. There's not a lot of open and green space. There's not a lot of parkland. It is designed for young professionals, perhaps some retirees and that sort of thing. So I'm not sure it'll have an impact on Teasley at all. Traffic? I tend to think the traffic impact is going to be minimal as well, and I'm going to ask Jane in a few minutes from DOT to come up and talk to us about that. And important to me was that the neighbors began to turn around, and I started hearing perhaps as many as 10 to 1, 15 to 1 in favor of this. They bought into it. Staff has looked at this, has analyzed it, has given us their recommendations, and we've looked at it. I think the overall, I think it's a pretty good plan. So that's kind of where we are today. John, why don't we start with you? Come on back up for a few questions, please. You had a community meeting. When was that?
March 17th.
March 17th. Pretty well attended.
Yes, sir.
Issues come out of that that caused you to adjust the stip letter?
It did. Well, that's, I met Mr. Gotti, who is a resident of, for the State Lane subdivision right next to us. He's an adjacent property owner, and he's the one that came up to me in the meeting. In fact, he was there early, and we looked at the site plan, and he's the one that recommended changing the, the buffer from a landscape buffer to an, a naturally enhanced, to try to save some trees, which we did. We talked about fencing type, and we talked about the development as a whole. And so we got a lot of ideas. I think Mr. Smith and his comments, we had initially stipulated that these would be front and side architecture, and we heard from the residents there about wanting four-sided architecture, and Brooks Chadwick had agreed to change that, and we did. We changed, added in the four-sided architecture to the stipulation. There were others, but certainly, and we did after even the stipulation letter came out, we talked about.
So concessions, considerable concessions were made?
Yes.
In many areas. What about, as Mr. Smith mentioned, what about the setbacks, especially at the entrance?
Well, I think that what, you've got a, a kind of a turn, a short amount of frontage on Paces Ferry, and then you turn and you've got a larger amount of frontage on Simpson, and that's where the entrance is. And what we're doing there, since we're fronting those units to the street, this is the developer and the builder, that you, what you want to create is an urban look, because that's what these young professionals are looking for, is pull them closer to the street, have them rear loaded with a, with a, an alley in the rear. And then it also enhances the streetscape for the residents that are there. And I think in Mr. Smith's email that he sent to you, and, and I got a copy of, he also said, we need to be most concerned with the adjacent residents. Well, we've heard from both subdivisions, the one next to us and the one across the road, and they're pleased with it. So I think, and we're quite honestly trying to get 67 units on here. And it has to be, we left the full setback on Spring Hill because of topo issues. We felt we needed to do that. We didn't try to crowd it or overgrade it, and we added the 25-foot buffer on, on the adjacent subdivision side. So we tried to put them where we thought they were most important, that is, the setbacks.
Of course, there'll be some enhanced landscaping along Simpson Road.
Oh, yes.
I assume as well.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay. I've forgotten who it was, mentioned that there's no way we could get a school bus into and out of here. What's your comment on that?
Well, I don't know that that's the case. I haven't heard that.
These are private streets, I'm assuming.
They are private streets, but they'll be 24 feet wide, just like a regular subdivision street is. The, only the alleyways will be smaller, but we build our private streets to the same conditions that you do a subdivision street, even though they're private.
And there may not be a lot of children here.
We don't, we don't anticipate any. I can't say there won't be any as an absolute fact, but this is going to be marketed to young professionals and to empty nesters who are, who like to have developments like this, they feel secure with this, the yards are maintained, they can have a place here, a place in the mountains, or a place at the beach or lake, and not worry about leaving and coming back. So we, as I said, there are no amenities and there are no playgrounds, and so we're not trying to attract. I think that young professionals like this because of the location. They can get to work quick, more quickly from here, and that's always a big seller. And then I think the security and the type of quality and maintenance is unattractive to an empty nester as, as well.
One of the neighbors told me a couple of days ago that it did not appear to them that you had nailed, or that the fencing issue had been nailed down, especially as it relates to the folks that live in Bill's area, the State's Lane and down Simpson. What are we doing on the fencing?
Well, we, we put in an option for, for us to, when we get out there to look at it. Right now, we're in the site plan, we're not into the engineered plans. And so we wanted to consider a wrought iron fence or a, a six-foot solid wooden fence, one or the other. And the main thing was to put a, a fence barrier through there. That was their main concern. They were fine with either of those. We also put an option on the detention pond. We'd like to use wrought iron. I know that, that the Cobb County staff prefers the black vinyl clad chain link fences, but we wanted it to be a little more decorative because you've got units that are back up there. So that, that, those are just the only, the only two options we have. I mean, it's not like we've got a lot of options.
Okay. So the fencing will be resolved at some point?
Yeah. By plan review, they will know what's going in there.
Okay. All right. That's excellent. Will any, this was another question from a neighbor. Will any decks or patios protrude into the setback areas or not?
No, I, I, well, I don't think so. When I say I don't think so, I don't, I, steps, I don't think count as the structure, so they can be. If the deck, you can have patios and decks in a setback because it's not part of the structure. It's like you can have parking in a setback as well. If you're on a non-residential, you can park in a, in a setback area. So as long as, setbacks pertain to structures, so deck's not considered a part of the main structure, excuse me, structure.
Okay. So we should be okay there.
Yes, sir.
The, the church, is it being used now or not?
No.
They've already moved out?
Yes, sir.
And tell us again, what was the plan for securing that and boarding it up and demolition, should you get your zoning?
Right. We're going to, once we close the property, we own it, we're going to secure it. That is, it's a, it's not a house that we have to worry about boarding up. What we need to do is make sure it's secure, that it can't be broken into, it can't be used by anybody. And then, once we get the land disturbance permit, then we're going to knock it, demolish it.
Well, this, this person was concerned about vandalism and people getting in there that shouldn't be there.
Right. And that's what, when I say secure, that means we're going to do what we have to do so people cannot get in there.
Okay.
And it will be checked as well regularly.
Okay. Any other questions for John? Anybody? Kristy?
I just have to ask, because you've said it several times, who are the young professionals that you're marketing to? Because the price point is so high. When I think young professional, I think 30-year-olds and 25-year-olds.
Well, I think that what we find, though, is amazing. It's a little different than when I was growing up as a 25 or 30-year-old and what you earn. Since I started out practicing, like $600 a month, that's a little different today. But they make a lot more money than you would think they make, and the reason that there are so many young professional or millennials is that they're called sometimes. And all of the rental product that's down at Cumberland Galleria is because a lot of them can't come up with a down payment for a home. But there is a large segment that can, especially dual income, young professional families can. So when you start adding their incomes together, it's surprising what they make.
Dual income, no kids?
No kids, right.
Basically.
Now, I think they also seem to do that, and then they, when they get ready to have children, they move to a house that's got a yard. You don't see them staying really in these type developments.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Skip just said, young professional to us is anybody over 50 that's working, you know, but maybe not Kristy, but.
It's all relative.
It is. It is. Any other questions for John? Okay. Mr. Brayden, could I get you to come up just real quick? Let's talk a little stormwater. I did have several people that asked about runoff, stormwater control and so forth.
Good question.
I know you've looked at this site several times, and I had concerns that the, the proposed location was probably not the best site. I, I tend to think it is, but I want the professional to tell us. And is it going to be sized enough to catch the runoff so that it doesn't impact any of the nearby neighbors?
It is in the only location I think it can be placed to, to control the whole site, the whole entire site, so the low point of the site where all of the site drains currently, except for maybe the little part of the frontage up along Paces. So yes, it is in the location that it needs, that it does need to be, and it will be designed not only to the county standards, but because of the increase in impervious coverage over what's out there now, where we've, we've applied our increased level of detention.
Well, speaking of impervious, are we, what is, what is allowed? John, what's allowed for impervious right now on this site?
It'll be 45%.
And Dave, do you know what will be if this is approved?
What they're showing on the plan states 60%. I've not been able to verify that, but that's, that's what they're showing.
So it could be as high as 60%. Okay. That's a little higher.
Yeah.
That's why, I think that's why some folks were concerned about the detention.
And that's why, and that's why I applied, what we usually do in those cases is have an elevated level of detention as well as water quality for that site, for the site.
Okay. Good.
And there's, there's downstream analysis required always as well to make sure that even, even those don't cause problems downstream, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for Dave? Jane, you want to make your way forward? Thank you, David. Let's hear a little bit from DOT. The other big concern that was expressed here and that I heard a lot about was traffic. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Jane Strickland with DOT. You had asked me to compare the traffic from the old site plan to the new site plan.
Yeah.
So the old site plan, we did have a traffic study from ForeSite Group, and they had anticipated to generate 2,031 net daily trips and then outbound. And that includes reductions for pass-by trips and internal capture because it was a mixed-use development. With the 67 townhomes, roughly it'll be 670 daily trips, so it's a difference of 1,361.
So a big reduction, new plan over, over old plan.
Yes.
Will, will there be a decel lane?
We've asked for a decel lane on Paces Ferry for Simpson Road.
Okay. On Paces Ferry, not on Simpson Road?
Correct. Because we thought that would be a bigger benefit.
Okay. All right. One lady said, why can't we have a lot of flashing lights? And she had this pretty elaborate description of what she'd like to see there. If lights of any kind are added, what has to be done to justify that? Whether it's a traffic light or a caution light, or how does DOT handle that typically? Whether it's a traffic light, or a caution light, or how does DOT handle that typically?
Um, we have signal warrants that we can look at and work with the community. Um, putting a traffic signal at Simpson Road would have to meet warrants, it's very close to the signal at Spring Hill Parkway and Paces Ferry, so it wouldn't meet our separation. We normally like a thousand feet between signals.
So warrant studies account and, and an exam that you do that will either justify it or not?
Yes, yes, it has to meet one of the nine warrants, and it's a national, um, criteria.
And, and to get to that point, who has to request that? The neighbors or?
Y- yes.
So if the neighbors come to you and say, we really have an issue here, we'd like for you to consider that, you would then start the process?
We could start the process.
I got you, okay, very good. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Jane? Okay, Jane, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I don't have anything else, I think, for these folks. Do you guys have anything else you wanna ask? Uh, I believe the issue, John, you can just nod from where you're sitting, guest parking was brought up, I believe we're okay with guest parking.
Yes, sir.
So the fire marshal, Rock, C. Rock, sitting on the front row, okay. There are a certain amount of guest parking spaces that will be required, and I think that's been taken care of, that was another issue. So I think we're pretty much covered. Uh, if nothing else, I'm ready to move forward with my. Okay, my motion for Z eighty-seven is going to be for approval of Z eighty-seven for RM twelve, for a maximum number of sixty-seven units, subject to all staff comments and recommendations, subject to the STIP letter received from Mr. Moore dated March the twenty-third, with a few additions and corrections. Looking at the STIP letter, um, I want to go to number four, just to tighten that up a little bit, about the maximum number of residences. At the end of that sentence for number four with, I'd like to add, with no retail components allowed on this site, uh, let's see, let's go to number five, um, I'm not sure, this would be redundant, but I was asked to add this. It mentions three stories would be the maximum height, not to exceed the county standard of thirty-five feet, and that's measured from the underside of the eve to the ground, that would tighten that up just a bit. Um, as John mentioned in number six, we want to eliminate the words board and batten entirely from number six. Talks about the garages. Add at the end of number eleven, uh, they shall be utilized for vehicle parking only. Number twelve mentions the, uh, number of units that might be for lease. We normally put that at ten percent, that's what they're asking for here. The question that I asked Mr. Moore a few days ago, who's gonna enforce that? And so what I'd like to add at the end of number twelve is that enforcement, monitoring and enforcement of the ten percent lease rule will be handled by the HOA, and that's pretty standard, pretty typical, and they'll know how to do that. Um, number eighteen has to do with that guest parking required by Cobb County. Um, add at a minimum of one-half space per unit, with all details confirmed at plan review. That's, again, that's redundant, but let's get that on the record. Uh, number nineteen, I'd like to eliminate in its entirety and replace it with, all exterior lighting, including streetlights and security lights, must be environmentally sensitive and designed to prevent illumination from penetrating outside the boundaries of the subject property. We had one family that was concerned about lights shining into their bedroom or their home. Um, let's see, let's go to number twenty-three. Item twenty-three on the STIP letter talks about sidewalks. I'd like to add at the end of that, further, any existing sidewalks on Simpson or Paces Ferry that may be damaged during buildout will be repaired by the applicant in a timely fashion, so we'll take care of that. Let's go to number twenty-seven, this talks about vehicles being parked on the site during construction, that's very important, but there's no mention of construction hours. Now, this gets to be a contentious issue, we can tighten the hours or loosen the hours of actual construction, but I tend to go with this, and then, John, if you wanna talk to Commissioner Odd about it later, I would like to add to number twenty-seven, construction and materials delivery for the site, the hours will be limited to Monday through Friday, seven AM to five PM, Saturday, nine AM to five PM, Sunday, no work at all unless pre-approved by the district commissioner. Um, if we give them more time, which I expect them to ask for, it just means they can finish the job sooner, so think about that, and, uh, but this is what I'd like to, to have presented to the VOC right now. Let's go to number twenty-eight. This is the part about the fencing and also the tree save area. I'd like to add at the end of twenty-eight, further, any trees identified to be saved in this location will be fenced at the drip line in order to preserve the critical root zone. This is pretty typical of tree saves, either chain link or some sort of fencing out from each tree during construction, so that they know not to run tractors through it, and let's try to save these trees if we can. Uh, go to number twenty-nine, this is our minor modification stipulation, pretty standard, one has been omitted, I wanna add a number F that reads, or that would be in direct conflict with or in contradiction to any of the agreed-to stipulations or any Cobb County code or zoning ordinances. John added a number thirty-five, which, um, we'll allow, and then number thirty-six, uh, I would add, applicant agrees to secure all the existing structures. This may have been thirty-five, John, was this thirty-five?
Yes.
Okay, well, then let's don't do a thirty, thirty-six, because you've got that covered, you'll have that covered in your revised stipulation. This has to do with the church and any other, um, structures on the site, when they'll be boarded up and so forth, which I think is appropriate. Um, I think that would be enough. Anybody wanna add, question anything? Okay, then that would be my motion, can we get a second?
A second.
Get a second for Skip, any further discussion? Not seeing and hearing any call for the vote, all in favor, so that's approved for Z eighty-seven. Many people, dozens and dozens of people that corresponded by directly, or email especially and phone calls, Mr. Jancy, you were very helpful, Mr. Smith, very helpful, uh, Mr. Hooker, very helpful, John, of course, was Johnny-on-the-spot to call me back whenever I gave him a buzz, uh, but I appreciate all the help from, from everyone, thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Peterson? Uh, okay, we've, we've been asked to take a quick break, so we're gonna take a ten-minute break, and we will be back at ten-thirty. Okay, we're back after a quick break, took a little longer than we needed to, but, uh, that's okay. Mr. Peterson, what's next on the agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, uh, the one case that was on consent that was pulled off, LUP five, Maria Claudia Ortega, I believe the applicant and the opposition have come to an agreement or an understanding, and I think we can put that back on consent if the board is okay with that.
Okay, and since we did not vote on it before, we'll need to vote on that.
How about read it back in?
Okay, how about reading it back into the record for us?
Okay. LUP five, Maria Claudia Ortega, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of a daycare, landlot's nine forty-nine and nine fifty of the sixteenth district. Property's located on the east side of Augood Road, north of Camellia Drive. Staff recommends approval for twenty-four months, subject to the hours of operation to be Monday through Friday from seven AM to six PM. Difens up to pre-kindergarten age children only, no overnight stays for the children, no outdoor signs, uh, only one employee is allowed, maximum of ten children unrelated to the owner and district commissioner to approve the landscape and fencing plan. The applicant is present, is there anyone here opposed to LUP five? Let the record show there's no one opposed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we've taken care of that one issue, this goes back on the consent agenda. This is Kristy's, any comments, anything you wanna add?
No.
Okay, why don't you make a motion for us?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve LUP five as presented.
For the consent agenda, okay, can we get a second for that? Second from Gaunt, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? So that's on the consent agenda, thank you very much. What's next, John?
Yes, sir. Resoning case Z five, Aldridge Grading and Trucking Company Incorporated, request rezoning from R twenty to LF for the purpose of a contractor, landlot forty-four, the eighteenth district. Property is located on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway, west of Cooks Road. Yep, is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z five? Let the record show there's one person opposed. All those wishes are addressed to board, please go forward, it's sworn in.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, good morning. Um, members of the planning commission for the record, my name is Garth. Who's also the property owner concerning this application for rezoning, and I have with me today, Mr. Tim Aldridge, uh, of course, of Aldridge Grading and Trucking Company, and the two of us can respond to any questions you have at the appropriate, uh, time. Uh, this is an application that was filed on November the thirtieth of, of last year, so it's been pending for some time, it's been continued twice by the, uh, the county's professional staff in order to give us an opportunity to, uh, to, to meet with the, uh, the district planning commissioner, and of course, uh, the Mayleton Improvement Coalition representatives, and, and others in the, uh, in the, the general community and along the Veterans Memorial Corridor, and I think you can see that with respect to the, the, the dialogue that we've established with area business owners, property owners and residents that are, that are behind us in south and, and up and down veterans, that we've done a good job of diffusing any, any misunderstanding or opposition that may have been to this application to begin with. What I'd like to do is, uh, is get the, the pointer and a, a microphone, and, um, and tell you a little bit about this property. This is a, um, this is a point six zero acre tract of land, as you can see, located on the, the southern side of Veterans Memorial Highway, uh, just west of Cooks Road, which is here. Mr. Aldridge's business is here, as you can see outlined, at the corner of, of Cooks and Veterans Memorial. Uh, he, uh, is a, a business that is non-conforming, grandfathered use, uh, that's the reason we didn't bring this application into the, um, into the process, because it is zoned and is properly utilized and it's, and it's non-conforming set of circumstances. Just to give you a flavor for the other properties in the area, I know you have a GIS mapping your, mapping your zoning analysis, but the properties across the street here, all on veterans, if you could look at a Google Street, uh, scene of that, you would see what it looks like, and give you a flavor for the corridor on that side. They're all GC, uh, NS, some of which are, uh, grandfathered, some of which are not. Uh, the property that surrounds, uh, our piece right here is, is O and I, Office and Institutional. Uh, this piece here is, is, uh, uh, NRC Neighborhood Retail Commercial. Uh, as I stated, the piece at issue is R twenty, Mr. Aldridge is GC. This piece right here is Light Industrial, uh, and all of these pieces that are south of this are, are either commercial or, or residential, but Mr. Aldridge owns this piece, this piece, the piece south of it, uh, this piece, excuse me, this piece as well, and of course, where his, where his business is, is located. I think a question may have arisen during the, the course of your, um, your, your planning commission work session as to how long this has been in an activity center, and I go a long ways back, so I, I have land use maps that go a long ways back, as well as zoning maps that go a long ways back. So, this has been in a, a neighborhood activity center, uh, for non-residential utilization since before nineteen ninety. I've got the nineteen ninety future land use map, and it shows it in a neighborhood activity center at the time, and of course, uh, the, the business on the property existed, uh, at that time, uh, a- as well. Now, even though the, um, the property, uh, at issue today is zoned R twenty, it, it's within this neighborhood activity center, so clearly, this is not, uh, a piece of property that's destined for any type of, of, uh, low-intensity, uh, residential, uh, utilization. By virtue of the, you know, the, the papers that you file contemporaneously with an application that, that challenge the constitutional issues, that, that you're really obligated, or the commissioners ultimately are obligated from a quasi-legislative capacity to zone the property to some other classification. What Mr. Aldridge is requesting, though, is, is a rezoning of it, uh, in order to, uh, accommodate, um, his business, and, and that is for a specialized contractor's office. He's, he's different than that, so this is a different, uh, uh, amalgam of his, of his business, but we're asking for rezoning from R twenty to conditional NRC for the purpose of a specialized contractor. And, um, the county staff, um, of course, uh, recognized when we originally filed for Light Industrial that that wasn't appropriate, as did we, and we, we knew we'd be deleting it to the, to the NRC classification if staff, um, recommended approval, which it, which it did. So, um, your professional staff, which is hired to be your professional staff, has recommended that the application be, be approved. Um, during the penance of this application, because it's been pending so long, we've had an opportunity not only to talk about the, to talk with the people who aren't here, but talk with the person who is here, uh, we've also established an extensive dialogue with the county staff, um, also with the county attorney's office, and, and the discussions with the county attorney's office, what was how best to supplement, uh, or enhance the stipulations by, by virtue of, of the, being able to attach conditions or stipulations of zoning to the piece that's not before you now, and that's the piece that Mr. Aldridge uses for his, for his present business. Also, we, as I mentioned, we, we've met, uh, several times with the Mayleton Improvement, uh, Coalition and other members of the, of the county's professional staff, besides just the zoning, uh, division. Um, in fact, I, I can't think of one rock we haven't turned over, and, and we have continued to think outside the box on this application to, to, to figure out a way to make it right, so that, um, the county was in a position, or the opposition was in a po- position to be able to utilize, uh, this property as a fulcrum for, for getting improvements on, uh, Mr. Aldridge's present piece, and we think we've been able to, um, to, to do that. In that respect, you should have a stipulation letter that we submitted last week on, uh, the twenty-fourth. Uh, it, it is, incorporates staff's comments and recommendations, it incorporates self-imposed stipulations and conditions, it imposes, uh, or proposes some of the, uh, stipulations and conditions that the Mayleton Improvement Coalition has, um, recommended as well. First of all, this will be a rezoning from R twenty to NRC for this use only specialized contractor, utilizing the, um, let me pull up the site plan. Utilizing the, the existing part of the property, um, that, uh, that's been established as a, as a non-residential use, uh, so it can be, um, entitled and, and utilized for NRC purposes. Um, this is, as I mentioned, in a neighborhood activity center. Um, we've also agreed to undertake whatever remedial measures are needed with respect to the, the fence that Mr. Aldridge has, um, along Cooks Road. Um, it's in a partial state of disrepair and parts of it, you may have seen photographs of that, and, uh, it's an eight-foot privacy fence. He actually owns all the properties on the other side of Cooks, so, um, it's to his advantage and to his tenant's advantage as well. As far as dealing with other stipulations and conditions on the contiguous tract, which is his business, what we've agreed to do is to, to, uh, place those in a set of covenants which will be in favor or enforceable and in favor of Cobb County. Uh, the county attorney's taking the position that code enforcement wouldn't be able to enforce those, but you can enforce them by way of, of filing an injunction, uh, if the stipulations and conditions were not carried forth on the piece that's not before you. And I know, I'm, I'm seeing puzzled faces, so if you're, if you're confused, let me know, and I'll be glad to, to slow down and, and let you know what we're talking about legally and constitutionally. Um, the, um, allowance for the specialized contractor would allow for the existing outside storage, the fenced-in area on this, on this property as well. With respect to the outside storage area, we would infence that with a giant vinyl coated, black vinyl coated chain link fence, and then put landscaping around that. With respect to additional fencing along Veterans Memorial and the property that's not a part of the application, we've agreed to replace that with vinyl coated chain link fence, uh, and attendant low-story vegetation. We've also, uh, agreed that the existing residential structure, you can see right in the middle of the property, it's a, it's a house that was utilized for residential purposes, the lady that was in it died, and Mr. Aldridge bought it from his estate, but it's got a brand-new roof on it, it's got gray bones, it's a, it's a good building, so we're gonna continue to use that, but we've agreed to, uh, to paint it a whiter or beige color in accordance with Mayleton Improvement Coalition's requests, and, and also to landscape around it and keep it grass and mowed and, and have a nice appearance from the street. The, uh, existing trees on the property, I'm gonna go back to the air of photo, I'm driving, it's crazy. The existing trees on the, on the property, and they're, and they're plentiful, uh, are located approximately here, also bleeding into this other property that is, that is zoned in the O and I classification. These will remain intact here. Again, for this, this, what staff's recommending is that this allowance be allowed to take place, and we're just putting another fence around it and, and landscaping and vegetating that. The fence I mentioned on Veterans will be here, the fence I mentioned on Cooks will be right, right there. There is no requirement from a stormwater management perspective to have any kind of stormwater management or water quality. to have any kind of stormwater management or water quality components on the property unless we disturb it more than 5,000 square feet, which we're not doing, which we haven't done. So we'll comply with all the stormwater's recommendations. Ms. Chairman, I'm out of time. If I have about 30 seconds to wrap up. We've also agreed all of DOT stipulations, which include paving the apron along the frontage of the property in order to dissuade or hopefully discourage and not allow gravel to be spilled out onto Veterans Memorial Highway. All the signage on the property right now is of a low nature, ground-based style. We've agreed that any new signage and existing signage, if not commensurate with the code, will be revised so that it will be ground-based monument-style signage. And any of the stipulations and conditions that I mentioned regarding this contiguous tract, those, it's not a part of my letter, but I'm saying it's part of my presentation that clearly those will not need to be in effect should the property ever be redeveloped. And obviously, those covenants would disappear and not be of full force effect. In connection with this application, Mr. Aldridge has gone to extraordinary lengths. Mr. Porter's walked the property with us. Everyone is conversant with the long-established business that Mr. Aldridge has there. He'd like to stay there. While each and every issue couldn't have possibly been addressed in the context of this since the GC piece is not a part of this application, we think we've done as good a job as we can do. So we're asking that you follow your professional staff's recommendation for approval, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. Let's hear from the opposition now.
Good morning. My name's Sonya Wheatley. I'm with the Mableton Improvement Coalition. And the MIC board has voted to oppose the request to change this property to LI and then to NRC. Yeah, got it, to NRC for the use of specialized contractor. We have requests, we are asking that you simply zone it NRC, because it does need to be rezoned since it's R-20. I will say that, you know, Mr. Sams is correct that we've had a lot of discussion, and we've attempted to, we've tried to find kind of a middle ground. Okay, sorry about that. We have attempted to, clearly with the GC portion, and the desire to not risk the grandfathering, of course. But we're really dealing with a situation where, you know, the covenants, the approach to doing this, according to the county staff, as I understand it, it's simply not an option. It can be put in, but is the county ever going to take them to court? No. You know, will it take the public out by not allowing this to be something that can be dealt with with code enforcement, which is public domain? Yes, and that is also problematic to us. This is a view of the back property, of the property, of not the portion that the application is on, but on this GC portion that we've been discussing that's grandfathered. I believe it is correct that the applicant owns several of the surrounding properties, and we discussed... Do you mind switching to the aerial for just a moment? I know, we discussed... The road that runs behind Wallace Road, it is a neighborhood road. It's an older neighborhood, but it's a neighborhood. Lots of people living back there. The LI, I'm assuming, would end up coming back if, you know, if it were ever to be, somebody were attempt to do something. The NRC portion, we kind of skipped over, the one to the left of it. It's not just NRC, it's a daycare. And it's a daycare that's across from Lindley Middle School, which is what's across the street. So it is quite a successful daycare. I live very close by, and they're always packed and busy. He was absolutely correct that the two properties across the street, two or three, the GC and the NS directly across, are in horrible repair. But it's certainly not indicative. These guys have been in non-stop code enforcement, the code enforcement world, dealing with violations. It's atrocious, and it's inappropriate, and it's obviously against what's allowed. So we can't really use that as an example as to how things should be and why we should have industrial and growth. To get to this more specifically, you know, we would request that you do NRC. And understanding that there have been a lot of great cases where things are starting to turn around, we're getting growth, you know, we're looking for that positive trend. The letter that MIC submitted dated March 28th has some stipulations requesting that it be paved, the driveway be paved from Veterans Memorial onto this property, because it can't really be used at all right now for anything business. So if it's owned at RC. That if the existing house is to be used as a separate business, that there be installation of a driveway and parking area that implies that the house be repainted within 90 days. That we not allow anything greater than 1,250 pounds. I understand it's grandfathered, but to be perfectly honest with you, you know, it's a very heavy use. Every time I go by, there are dump trucks, there are backhoes, there's a dumpster outside the fence, you know. And if you don't mind showing the pictures now. Allowing for the current condition of the property, it's very hard to kind of have honest conversations when you look at what someone's property looks like, and then it's like, well, we'll do this. Well, it kind of should have always been done. The fence is falling down. That's, he's trying to switch over. I just wanted to show you... That's not only what his, the properties that he owns adjacent, but what everybody in that neighborhood gets to look at when they drive out. And then if you'll go to the next, fence is pretty much falling over. And there should be one more. Did I miss it? All right. I don't think I have it, and I apologize. I had a really good picture. But if you are on that road going out and you look through, you can actually see the daycare through the property. So where these trucks are parked, you know, I'm assuming there is a retaining wall, but it's still that close to little kids playing. And just expanding industrial use, anything and kind of opening Pandora's Box seems like a really bad idea to us. So we would ask you just rezonate to NRC with conditions, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Wheatley, anyone else wishing to give testimony on Z-5? Okay, not seeing and hearing any. This is District 4. This is in Gaunt's district. So why don't you handle our discussion?
Okay, thank you, Mike. Now, this is a difficult case in that, you know, we have an existing business next door that some time ago purchased the property. Well, the property next door, they purchased in 2003, and at some point shortly thereafter, expanded their business into that property with no entitlement to do so. The property was a house and used as a house prior to the purchase. And, you know, then it, you know, quit being used as a house. And now we have what really is an industrial use on the property with storage of, you know, this is a grading contractor, so obviously, they have backhoes and dump trucks and all those types of things. And, you know, when we looked at it initially, I was thinking in terms, we often make exceptions for existing buildings and existing items that maybe don't quite fit into a zoning category or into even necessarily the future land use. And specialized contractor is one that we often do make that exception for. But when I stepped back and looked at this, it's, you know, this property's been at a neighborhood activity center since the county adopted the future land use maps in 1990. It's never changed, so when Mr. Aldridge purchased the property, he shouldn't have had any expectation of being able to use this, you know, for an industrial kind of use. You know, which really gives me concern. You know, we don't have the parcel next door into us for zoning, so we really, as Mr. Sams has tried to kind of tie the two together, we really don't have it to tie together as one site. We're really just looking at this one parcel. And if we look at one parcel, I don't see a reason to expand an industrial use into a neighborhood activity center. I also think expanding that industrial use could have an adverse effect on that O and I piece being developed into something as well. So, you know, those are the concerns that I went through with it. I looked and said, what do we typically do with an old house that's no longer being used as a house, but is being converted to some commercial use? And the typical zoning category for that is LRO, Low-Rise Office. And, you know, to me, that seems appropriate for this property. It's an old house that certainly could be used, put to use for an office. You know, with an industrial use, it just doesn't fit here. You know, and so I can't support the staff recommendation of NRC with a specialized contractor, because it's really expanding a grandfathered use in my mind. But it's also putting in industrial, because it's really, you know, that kind of equipment goes beyond the specialized contractor office use. It really falls outside of what that exemption's meant for. So that's kind of my analysis of it. Does anybody have any comments before I make a motion?
Judy?
I have to look for my button. Just, I went down and looked at this site. It's not a pretty sight on Veterans Memorial, nor is it a pretty sight when you come down Cooks Road. It's a heavy, intense use. In looking at it, I believe that the solution I would see would be, since the GC portion is not in the R-20, it's not, to me, appropriate to do an LRO, because it's not a step-down-type zoning, because you're already wrapped with the O and I, which would have been the step-down zoning. And then you go to NRC, so LRO wouldn't really accomplish anything, in my opinion. I think you could do the NRC, because he's entitled, he's in a NAC, for contractor use only. I think, to me, the whole issue is the house and bringing it up where it looks better. And the only way to do that would be for a use, and the contractor's use seems to be the best thing. I'm hearing from Nick or Mick, I can't, Mick, Nick. It's these cameras and it's the new equipment.
Mableton Improvement Coalition.
Mick, Mick. The GC portion is grandfathered. We can't touch it. It's not in, and it shouldn't even be. So the only consideration is the dump trucks on the end. That seems to be the thing. And if we could work out a situation where that could be put on the other piece of property, where this is just the office use only, it seems to me that could work out. And I can't find my button. Wait a minute.
And one of the things is, they don't really intend to use that old house for an office use. They want to use it for storage. So they weren't really expanding that. What they want to do is store parts of that in the old house so that they can free up room in their existing building so that they can do more maintenance in the existing building, bring more equipment to the property, essentially.
But he didn't say that. Could we get him back up here and just get a verification of that? I didn't understand it that way. Could we ask him a question?
Yeah, that came out of the meetings. I don't think it was said in here, but...
Yes, if Mr. Sams could come up, I just... If Mr. Chairman doesn't mind, I'd have a brief question. Can we clarify as to what the building will be used for?
The building will continue to be used for the storage purposes, as Mr. Porter has said. The configuration of the lot with its fenced-in will remain exactly the same. And that's what staff has said, that everything remains the same in there in terms of equipment. But we're utilizing that now for storage, and I think under the NRC classification, unless staff disagrees, I think we'd be able to continue to do that.
The storage is not that big?
Right, the office building, if you were down there, Ms. Williams, and you saw the office building's on the very front of the GC portion.
So you're not having outside storage, though?
Only outside storage would be in that little fenced-in area that you see to the left of the GC piece.
Right here, where the vehicles are.
Yes, ma'am.
But the house itself would be inside only.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I have a question just related to that. So the access to that building that's being, the house that's being used for storage is on the dirt road, is that correct? Right down through there where the arrow's moving right now, that's the access? And that's what DOT is asking to be paved?
Correct, if it was vehicular... Not using this for vehicular access. They're asking us to improve the apron here. There's a little area that goes here to the parking lot in front of the office component of Mr. Aldridge's business. So we'd be paving that and the apron there. This, the storage, when I say storage, I'm not talking, we're talking about smaller items that are in the workshop here. And so they would be delivered here via pedestrian or wheelbarrow or a trailer or something, but it would be a short path from here to here.
Okay, thank you.
We, I think we've used the NRC with specialized contractor solution often on Canton Highway. This reminds me a little bit of that in that sometimes you have a house or some other kind of building that has lost its functional use, and it's caught in a zoning that doesn't fit its land use, and things have changed. And it's something we see in areas like Austell Road and Canton Road and this area where there's a lot of very well-established GC and uses that were maybe even put in place before we had zoning. In my opinion, when we do that, the goal is usually to give somebody a use and try to make it fit the intent of the land use plan as much as it possibly can while we wait for redevelopment to really fulfill the goal of the land use plan. But I don't think this is set up that way. I think the applicant has expanded his heavy industrial use onto this property in advance of the rezoning request. And as Mr. Porter pointed out, this is not a situation where it used to be CAC and now it's NAC. It's been a neighborhood activity center for a long time. So the idea that we need to kind of help somebody through that transition isn't really the case here, in my opinion. And I also see in hindsight, sometimes when we do specialized contractor or contractor office use only in a NAC, it doesn't, in fact, end up being a placeholder. It turns into something that gets established and then wants to grow. So for that reason, I agree with Mr. Porter's comments. I don't know if LRO is the best zoning, but I think certainly no storage. I mean, if we're going to have NRC with heavy truck storage behind a fence, that doesn't really, I think that's pushing the envelope a little bit. So I would support an NRC zoning.
Anyone else? Judy?
Quickly, I could support the NRC utilizing the house with inside only and removing the dump trucks and the stuff down here. I could support that. I think that would be a reasonable use until such time as the O and I, the rest of it's developed. And he owns so many tracts of land at some point. But I think this would be, for the NRC, would be a good way to clean it up, get it looking better than the tract that's adjacent to it.
Okay, well, I could go NRC, as long as we're not, you know, putting in the storage of the equipment and things like that, because that's really the objectional piece. We were trying to find something that they could do with the house.
That really is the issue. Those big trucks that are parked back there, they just don't belong there.
Yeah. Okay.
I do have another question. Is there more than just a fence with those trucks around there on that, on the lower-left corners? We're looking at it now. Is that a structure that's right there?
No, sir.
That's just a trailer?
Yes, sir.
Top of a trailer? Okay.
Yep. Okay. And one of the things I'll comment on is the staff had called for a buffer to be placed around this area, but you would add to reconfigure and move it to make the buffer fit. So there were issues of it being able to stay where it is now and that if that had continued. But I don't think that's a use that we should continue, given its location and that. So, okay, I'll make the motion if everybody's done with comments. Okay. With regard to Z-5, make motion to... With regard to Z5, make motion to recommend deletion to NRC. All staff comments and recommendations, with the exception of items number two and three, which are to be deleted. And with regard to all the staff comments and recommendations, anything not otherwise in conflict with the following stipulations. And I'll make a comment before I continue on, just, I have a concern that if we don't put a fence to block access to that area that's currently being used, it's going to continue to be used. So I'm going to put a stipulation, a continuous 60-foot-long, six-foot-high wood privacy fence to be installed along the eastern property line of the property, starting with the southeastern corner of the property and running towards Veterans Memorial. That will bring it to where it meets the existing building, or, you know, prevent truck traffic going through. There shall not be any gates or other openings in the fence, the fence to be installed within 60 days of BOC final decision on this application. The fence to be maintained with any damage boards replaced within 30 days of damage. No outdoor storage allowed. All parking to be on hardened surfaces. A parking plan to be submitted to the zoning division manager for approval. Parking to be provided prior to occupancy of the building. And I'm going to add, since we went to NRC, I'm going to add some prohibitive uses, since we are directly across the street from a school and, and just about next door to daycare, and that would be no liquor stores, adult entertainment, pawn shops, or titled pawn shops, tattoo parlors, check cashing businesses, auto sales, or storage. And any gun, knife, or weapon sales of any type. Or used tire stores. And we'll go with that. And then District Commissioner to make minor modifications, except for those that increase the overall building square footage, violate the Cobb County zoning ordinance, would be in direct conflict or direct contradiction to Cobb County regulations, or any of the foregoing stipulations. That's my motion.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and get a motion in a second for discussion. Clarify, Galt, for me, the privacy fence, the wooden privacy fence, that's on the eastern boundary.
Right.
Full length or just closing off that?
Closing off that area.
So just closing off that?
It will go 60 feet from the back corner of the property, and it's about 60 feet to where you see the next building, if you can pull back up that diagram there. You start at the southeastern corner. Kind of even with this large building that you see on the neighboring parcel. So that will effectively
Okay.
Cut off the ability to
Got it.
To drive through there.
Okay, that's good. And, and as Judy said, along through in the discussion phase, as Judy said, the fellow does seem to own a lot of property in the area, so perhaps he can find someplace else to put these pieces of equipment.
Right.
That is, that is appropriately zoned.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Okay, so that's NRC. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Garvis.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Chairman, rezoning case Z11 and Slut 4 together, does the board want to hear those together?
I don't see why not.
Okay, I'll read them both together. Rezoning case Z11, Manousha Jahangar, requests rezoning from PSC and R20 to NRC for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-storage facility. Landline 34, the 18th District. The property is located at the southeast corner of Veterans Memorial Highway and Powell Drive, and on the south side of Old Powder Springs Road. Additionally, SLUP 4, Manousha Jahangar, requests a special land use permit for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-storage facility. Landline 34, the 18th District. Property is located at the southeast corner of Veterans Memorial Highway and Powell Drive, and on the south side of Old Powder Springs Road. Is the applicant present? Let the director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Z11 or Slut 4? Let the director show there's one person opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Bert Brown. I'm here representing Hills with Powell, who's, who's the owner developer of this property. Hills with Poe, I believe, is the proper pronunciation. And I, again, we have probably somewhat of a difficult, I know you've heard a couple, I've heard a couple of difficult presentations here, and unfortunately, I don't think I'm going to make it any easier, but I'm going to do my best. In order to avoid rambling and so forth, I have a somewhat of a written statement, so bear with me. I am a design professional, not a, not an attorney. But due to the difficulty of this, of this, of this project, I'm, I'm just going to tell you that, that I, I know the hardships that this developer is facing. See it from a professional and from a, from a operational standpoint and an investment standpoint. And I'm going to elaborate a little bit on my, on my opening remarks, just to draw a little continuity between those things. As a brief introduction, I was born at Kennesaw Hospital. I went to elementary, middle, high school, and Cobb County schools. I attended college in Cobb County. I grew up in Cobb County Church playing ball at Cobb County Parks. My parents, grandparents, all retired and live in Cobb County. I own and operate multiple businesses in Cobb County, including a $4 million indoor recreational and retail facility in Cobb County. I have submitted plans for a $10.5 million indoor recreational and retail facility in Cobb County, currently under, under review for, for approval. So, not by any zoning issues, but, but I tell you, I tell you this to relate that I consider Cobb County home and before, and believe myself to be a contributing part of the community, and well vested in the welfare of this, of this county. Today, I'm here as a design professional representing Hills with Powell, consideration of a zoning change and Slut for Climate Controlled Self-Storage Facility on Veterans Memorial in Mabelton. I have been in self-storage business for 30 years this year. My design firm works throughout the U.S. specializing in climate-controlled self-storage facilities. Among our design portfolios are many Cobb County facilities, including the new public storage at Cumberland Parkway at Paces Ferry in I-285. Other projects originally designed for homeland self-storage include the facilities on George Busby near Wade Green in Kennesaw, Sandy Plains, near Canton Highway in Marietta. They had a Traymore facility off the East-West Connector near Powder Springs Road. And there's a few of them. Another one that occurred to me while I was here, just because of the similar in scope, was a conversion of what used to be a High Five Bays near, on Cobb Parkway between Wendy Hill and close to the Old Rich Way, if you've been here for any time at all, so.
Exactly where it is.
But none of which I, I would embarrass, I'd be embarrassed to claim the design, and none of which were not originally opposed by some in the community. But today are successful facilities because they serve a vital service to the community in which they are located. Inherent qualities of self-storage are very low impact to traffic and other county resources. These facilities are safe, attractive, and do not create any nuisance when designed and operated properly. I've made my clients, Hills with Powell, very aware that the only path for success in self-storage is to provide a safe, secure, and operationally sound facility, providing curb appeal in the community in which they serve. I would not be standing here presenting this application if I felt they did not prescribe that formula for success. Today, I will address this redevelopment with very honest and candid statements due to the difficulty that my client faces. My clients have long struggled with the success of this retail center. This on the heels of a troubling economic recession going back to 2008, but even before that time, the Mabelton retail market was struggling. Today, there's an abundance of retail space available with vacancies all along Veterans Memorial, even down much of the Floyd Road corridor where new development is occurring into the East-West Connector area. This corridor along Veterans Memorial has struggled, as my client has, with crime, vandalism, vagrants, squatters, and constant dumping of trash. My clients have struggled with these problems and are in fact a victim of these community concerns. This was not a result of anything my clients did or didn't do. There have been, have been rogue, scrupulous activities for which they have been blamed, that I've witnessed in meetings, when in fact my clients actually sought county assistance and help by reporting some of these activities, when as a landlord, quick and immediate legal action would not and could not render immediate results. As I, as I stated, my clients are not the cause of the problems, but a victim. We can all wish that if we gave this center an overhaul or facelift, that would create a retail market. That is not realistic or the case. The inherent problem is there is not an abundance of retailers looking for space in this area. It is very easy for others to spend and risk this developer's money in hopes that it will create a market or recreate and redefine a market. My clients are simply looking for an alternative use of this property that provides some sustainability and usefulness in this market. I have worked and negotiated with my clients in an attempt to address both the county's concerns, and those of which have been, have been provided by a few in the community, also including the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. I have a list of those things that, which have been submitted to Galt. I have also forwarded those to the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. I will be real honest in telling you that they asked for more, but the truth of it is, is the economic feasibility of this project cannot support everything that they asked for. I'll save the addressing of each one of those items. One that was not, that I will address, is the access to the building, the access to this self-storage facility. They are fencing the back with vinyl link, vinyl chain link fence. Will put in a, a key access, an access code lift gate to the rear of the property. That will secure the rear of that property. Beyond that security, there will also be two keypad entrances to the rear lower floor of that building. The upper floor of that building for storage would be accessed through keypad, two keypad entrances on the upper, on the upper area. Also, in order to provide a safe, secure, there would be security cameras throughout the facility, both outside and inside the facility. There's a, one point of contention I will mention is a pre-engineered building on the rear leg of this property that has become, that has, that's been discussed. This building has been there long before my clients acquired the property. It does have paved access from an adjoining property off Powell Drive that has been using the facility for some time. I will tell you that they are no longer using the facility because evidently they were in code violation. This is, this is currently zoned, if, if I can point. You see the, the leg right there coming down, that he's currently got the, the pointer on, that for some reason, even though it's part of this property, is owned R20. The businesses there, which are, you can see, heavy parking of vehicles and service of vehicles and that, are zoned R20. And the building to the back was being used by them and has, is no longer being used. But that building has been there for some time. I have pictures of that building, it is rusting in some areas. I will say that, as a point in, in addressing that building, is the owners have agreed in, in this discussion, that if a use cannot be found, and access to that building cannot be found, some type of suitable and agreeable resolution, that they would remove the building. However, they want to pursue that to the full extent before they just go tearing down a building. So if it has, if it can, within the guidelines of the county, be used, and I think there are a lot of questions there that have to be answered, but they, they would like to pursue those before they make a final, a final determination on that. But as for the self-storage development, approval provides an avenue to a useful and sustainable business addition to the community. A business, while not glamorous, does provide a service to the community. You have a developer willing to make an investment, take a risk in this property and in this community. To reject this proposal is only doing nothing but maintaining additional vacant retail space with no foreseeable use. I respectfully urge you to recommend approval of this property. Lastly, I'll just mention that in meeting with a lot of people out there on this site, everybody says, wants to blame it on them, wants to blame it on the owner of the property, that if you maintain this property, if you gave it a facelift, if you made it look different, if you gave it more curb appeal, there would be, that would be the best use of the property. Just as an example, as I go down Veterans Memorial, adjacent to the subject property is a vacant car lot and a closed restaurant across the street. Hawthorne Plaza, which is a somewhat older but nicer retail facility near Old Powder Springs and Veterans Memorial, that's where the Save-A-Lot and the Riley Auto Parts is, there are eight vacant retail spaces in there. The similar, smaller White Column Center, very close to there, has two vacant retail. The Old Bankhead Clinic still sits vacant. The Village of Mabelton, this is where Publix, the Big K, Ollies is located, has 12 vacant retail spaces, four more across the street next to a vacant Car Care Center. The Plaza of, if we go down Mabelton Parkway, which is in the same market, where they would have to compete for retail space, the Plaza of Mabelton, where the Food Depot is located, four vacant retail spaces, Mabelton Walk, where the new Publix is, 10 vacant retail spaces, Mabelton Crossing, where the Kroger's located, two vacant retail spaces. I'm not trying to-
You need to wrap it up, we get the picture.
Okay, I'm not trying to air dirty, but they're suffering, they've got a hardship, they're trying to come up with a useful use of this property. So I ask for your, respectfully ask for your, your recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Let's hear from the opposition at this time.
Hi, I'm Sonya Wee with Mabelton Improvement Coalition again. This is, it's really kind of been a tough case, you know. We have somebody looking to, you know, to redevelop a site, you know, it's, it's definitely something we're interested in. Every, as we said before, things are growing, we're looking for improvement, we're getting some of that, even on Powell Drive. This has been really hard because we just don't have enough information. You know, so I guess I'll start with the photos and that part of the discussion. There hasn't been a blaming of the owner, but there is discussion of responsibility because, you know, the owner's not a victim. The owner purchased this, and there was a conversation made about it, if it's redeveloped, that it's important that it be designed and operated properly. This is what, again, scares us when we look at history of things, because you can't say that it's been operated properly when it's been in code enforcement for years. This is the sign, you know, this center about, and I'm not exact on the dates, so forgive me, but I would say within the last year, was pretty full, not great, you know, necessarily, certainly not Phipps Plaza-style businesses, but there was a grocery store in there, a Hispanic grocery store. It has moved across the street. It's, you know, they cleaned up, they did a lot of work, they moved. He's right, Hawthorne Plaza is getting busier. Basing other, you know, other businesses that are open, that's what happens. Things do unfortunately empty out, and new businesses come in, and we are seeing that. We were hoping to see some of that here, but we have instead, you know, if I'm looking to open a business, I can assure you that that view is not where I'm going to want to go. This is our, you know, lovely grandfathered sign that we've been fighting over for years with code enforcement, which, you know, I, I don't think anybody would want their business name up on that. The building, the glass is, is broken out, it took quite a while to get it boarded, there was a huge danger, you know, with just hanging shards of glass, and it was, code enforcement was successful in getting that taken care of. Again, going back to not having the information, even the site map itself isn't complete. You know, we, we were, the applicant- You know, we were, the applicant's representative was kind enough to meet with us there, with GALT, with some of the neighbors who live in the area. The building's missing. There, I don't, we walked it. I don't recall seeing any paving. There was a mud hill. I don't know where any paving could have been. It's, so we don't have a correct site plan. We don't understand what the deal is with the storage. We've asked for additional information. It's not that we're necessarily opposed to it being turned into a storage space, it's just that we don't have the information. We don't have configuration, we don't know what it would look like, and this is, you know, if it's, we've requested that continually. We were told, and that was in the email to Mr. Porter, that there would be 300 to 400 square foot retail spaces in the front, which seems like a very good compromise and idea. So utilizing it for some, for storage while still having those small kind of office pods that people, you know, are often looking for, but we have no details. We don't know how they're accessed. We don't know if they will be interior, exterior. We can't get enough information. Mick has requested, the vote is boarded, requesting that you guys deny SLUP for, I don't know exactly the wording, but if it could be denied with them having the option to come back, when and if they can get complete details, that would be wonderful. That it be zoned to NRC with conditions for cleanup. Again, you know, I just have a huge problem with the victim mentality. The owner hasn't kept this property up. Letting it run into the ground doesn't, cost, isn't a hardship, it's a cause-effect. If I may just read a couple of these, so we have requested, because it's, again, just getting detailed information's been- that if this board decides to approve that we do, that you do NRC for the entire property, including the R-20 section, that the demolition of the building in the back that was discussed occur within 90 days. The other thing is that if you look at the site, very rough calculations. Obviously, you'd have to rely on stormwater, but it is far over impervious. So there's no way that they could add anything to the site. It's probably 80-plus as it stands. So even if they wanted to pave it, I don't see how they could pave it. That there be a landscape committee which meets within 90 days of BOC approval. That the color and style of the building renovation, exterior be approved by the district commissioner. The broken glass needs to be repaired and the trash removed within 30 days. It doesn't help, there is one existing tenant, I don't know if they're staying or not. Certainly doesn't help them get any more as it stands. That the removal of all signage and that the sign that we saw in the beginning be replaced with county-approved current signage. And also importantly, you did see that, there was discussion of that back building. There needs to be a solid fence that prevents that. That's Powell Drive spilling over, parking on unimproved surfaces, and it's as far back as you can go on aerial. So it really needs to be secured so it's not accessed by them. And then removal, there's a loading dock also, if you, I don't know if the commissioners have had a chance to go by, but the pavement and the loading dock actually extends into the right-of-way as you go down Powell Drive. So I'd like to see that addressed. And then, of course, the standard prohibited uses as much as we can with, I think there were a couple in here specifically. And that there be a very clear demarcation between this and the property. Also, to the east, there's been drive-through access. I did go by yesterday. They have installed the barriers again. But it's a cut-through and that causes part of the dumping. People drive into the empty property to the left of that building and, sorry, and cut-through. And I believe that's it, just that no additional buildings or paving be permitted without obvious full review. So respectfully, we ask you guys to approve NRC and to deny the SLUP. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheatley. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to Z-11 or SLUP 4? Okay, come on up. Have you been sworn in? See the lady right there.
For the record, my name is Bob Meyer. I own the piece of property to the left on the screen up there. I had questions also. I'm not opposed to the zoning. It's just that I wanted more information. And I wrote a letter to the county zoning board and to the commissioner asking, it was addressed to the owners of the property, but ICC'd the county commissioner and the zoning department requesting additional information as to, I can provide this to you, but I wanted to see details on the elevations of the building, all four sides. I wanted to see a facade, you know, if it's going to be brick-stucco. I'm assuming they're not going to leave glass on the side of the building from a security standpoint. I don't see how they could do that. What colors, if they're changing the roof line. Have they completed an interior layout to see how feasible this is? I was involved in a self-storage facility one of the time of my life. It wasn't a climate-controlled, but I had question marks about the economic feasibility of this size building being used for a climate-controlled. I requested a site plan and a landscape plan, a lighting plan. This is a very unique situation in that the area, now, if I, to the left, there's a clearing area to the left of the building, not the tree area, but just that strip that runs down to Old Powers Ferry Road, yeah, that area. That is, that is an easement, an access, encroachment easement for the use of the owner of that building to access Old Powers Ferry Road. I think it's Old Powers Ferry, isn't it? Excuse me one second. Because of that, the building itself encroaches into my property. But I knew that when I bought the property. I'm not trying to get anything changed in that regard. I'm just trying to figure out how they're going to screen, landscape, an encroachment area that is partially paved so they have access to their dumpsters. And I requested all this on the 26th of January and I still haven't heard one word. I called Mr. Brown himself a few weeks ago, no response. It seems like it's difficult to get information back from the owner of the building. I met with him personally to cover these issues and I've heard nothing back from him whatsoever. And it's kind of frustrating. I've got people interested in my land, but they want to find out what's going to happen next door. I could not agree more. The building has been kept in, well, it's an eyesore, I'll put it that way. Deplorable condition is the way I'd describe it. And I can understand why they can't rent space if they keep the building in that condition. And that's all I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Meyer. We'll close this portion of the hearing. This is District 4. Galt, you want to handle our discussion, please?
Sure. I'll make a couple of comments before, and then I'm going to bring Mr. Brown back up for some questions. But I want to just start out with some general comments. You know, this is certainly a distressed property. You know, if anybody's gone out and looked at it, you know, it's fallen into disrepair. When we walked the property, there were broken windows that weren't even boarded over, allowing free access into the property. Obviously, you saw the old pylon sign that, that just doesn't look good at all. There's some real challenges here. And, you know, I do take note that, you know, there is a lot of retail space along Veterans Memorial. So that's certainly an issue. Something that wasn't mentioned, you may have noticed it in the photo though, in this back little portion, in kind of the front part of the back portion, there's a cell tower there. So in case you weren't aware of that. And then you follow on back and there's this building in the very back, which isn't even on the site plan, even though we requested a revised survey. It still didn't show up on the survey. Who knows why? But that is all dirt around there. There is no paving there. There may be some paving on this R-20 track that runs off of Powell Drive. But back in here, there's no paving. This building was built in approximately 1987, according to the tax assessor records. And you can look at it and see it's not a grandfathered building. It's clearly far newer than that. And it really has no access, no legal access, as Ms. Wheatley mentioned. This property is probably just roughly 80% impervious already. It's certainly well over 70%. So we wouldn't want to add any more pavement. And there's no place on the property, if you pave around here, there'd be no place to put a detention pond anyway with the area that the cell tower takes up in that. So it's really, you know, to me, that back building has no viable use because we can't get it up to code with any viable access. So I think that building should be demolished, just off because it, who knows if it was even permitted when it was built? But, so that's a real concern. If you notice down the western side, look off the side of the building, you barely can see it, but there's a piece of the loading dock that's actually in the county right-of-way. And, you know, that certainly highlights it there. And that needs to be removed because we don't want that to continue. So that's just a couple of general things. I'm going to ask Mr. Brown to come back up so that I can go through some questions with him that have been raised. I'll start because, you know, what we heard from the opposition was we don't have enough information yet to really, you know, say yes, move forward with it. I think we probably have enough information that we could move forward with just the zoning piece, but for the special land use permit for the self-storage that has other items. And we could probably use more on the zoning piece, to be honest too, but there's ways we can handle that. You know, one of the concerns that came up in meeting with the community is we have self-storage facilities in Mableton that aren't staffed on a regular basis. And what's become of some of those is people essentially living out of their cars. They, you know, are there first thing in the morning and go in and get stuff and come back out, but they're sleeping in the parking lot and things like that. So that's been one of the, you know, safety concerns and that. And I know you're going to have cameras, but that doesn't necessarily prevent people from doing that. So my question to you is what is the staffing plan? You know, how do you rent the units? Who's there to check on the facility? How often are they there? Are they going to be there a certain number of hours a day? All of those kinds of things that we haven't had a question to answer to yet.
What I've sent to, forwarded previously as well as to the Mableton Coalition, a lot of the questions I'm hearing are things that I believe are covered in that, but I'll go over some of those. As far as access, the access points, which I discussed a minute ago, are the same thing, but all that is monitored by, you can't, you can't enter the facility and it tracks entrances and exits of the facility. Therefore, you can look, you have the ability, and having been an owner in this business as well, you find out if people are using it or staying overnight. It does happen on occasion in certain areas and you'll see them come in and not go out until the following morning. You have to address those issues. As far as staffing, we have an office in these, we have an office, we showed the office on the, you can see it from the front elevation, it's the whole front corner, right corner of that building. There's about a 900-square-foot office in there. They'll sell boxes, packaging supplies, typically things needed for self-storage purposes. So yes, it's expected to be manned. We've addressed the hours of operation. Those will be the access hours. You come in outside of those hours, the gates aren't going to open, the doors aren't going to open. So I-
But what hours will the, actually that office be manned?
It's typically, typically an eight to five, eight to six type, six days a week. And I'd be glad to put it, I mean, we can easily put that in stipulations. I've been asked about the hours of the facility, but nobody's asked about the manning of the facility. But yes, we expect to have personnel there.
Okay, because that certainly-
Very quickly, I do have a picture of the facility next door. Can we put that on? And the question keeps coming up about the paving, and you can see the paving to that facility. Now, the question is, is the access that facility. I agree, that facility has always been accessed from Powell Drive. But is it a viable option that the business next door could use that facility within code?
Not really. You can't provide the parking that would be required for that facility. And that's just a little outside-the-door area paving, but true access to it's not paved. So I don't think it's viable. You know, I think what I saw back there is a mud mess, you know, where they've been driving vehicles and leading to erosion and problems that, that, you know, you need, why you need to have it paved to start with. So, you know, unless you want to take up considerable paving out of the rest of the parking lot to move some back there, that would, you know, be a different situation. But I don't, I don't see that as being feasible.
And as I stated, the owner has agreed that if there is no viable option, that they will take down the building. I do believe they should have the right to explore that thoroughly with engineering and so forth, and with the county before that is-
How long has the current owner had this entire-
Six years.
Okay, and in six years, he hasn't been able to find a viable use for this? And now you're telling us that he wants more time to investigate finding a use for it?
It was, it had been being used by the adjacent facility off Powell Drive until code enforcement came in there and that tenant had pulled, had vehicles around the outside of that vehicle, around the outside of that building. And at that point in time, they were asked to remove it. So this is, I don't know exactly the timeframe. I don't know the timeframe of exactly when that happened. But, and this really didn't come, I don't think this really came up as a discussion point here until probably in the last week and a half.
So it's not currently being used?
It is currently, it is currently vacant. And as I said, they have agreed that if there's not a viable option, then they'll take it down.
I'll say it's been a discussion point since we first met at the property, which was a couple of months ago. So it's not a new discussion point whatsoever. We walked all the way back there and looked at it. You know, so, you know, it's, they've had time to look at it, I think. And I'm not sure there was ever an entitlement to build that building because it's a commercial building on R-20 zoning.
I can't address that.
I have, you know, issues with that.
The one other thing I would like to mention is that the Mexican, the Mexican, or excuse me, the Hispanic store that moved out, I'm just going to, as that was one of the black eyes that had been thrown in our face, and I'm just going to say that that tenant was one of the, his family was the one involved in one of two shootings on that property. So there might be a good reason he's not a tenant there still. So again, there's more to stories and there's more to this property. We also had to address the sign. We agreed in, I've agreed in with agreement from the developer to fix, to totally fix that sign. Whether that, if that means, the question's been, do we tear it down and do it again? And that hasn't been agreed to. But to fix the sign and bring it into conformity, that's, we've agreed to that in writing.
Okay. I'll just move on from that. There was a question about access to the 300 to 400-square-foot, you know, retailer, office kind of spaces. Is that going to be directly outside or is it through hallways or?
We haven't, we haven't done completed four plans. We haven't done completed engineering. We've had the surveyor try to give a good idea of exactly where the islands. We are not increasing the impervious surface. We are decreasing the impervious surface in order to give more green space to the front of this building. That isn't, that we have, that's one of the things we have provided. This is, this current elevation has small changes to the previous elevation that was submitted. And to the sides of, you see the office to the far right and the- submitted, and to the sides of, you see the, the office to the far right, and the, and you can see, basically, we can fit three incubator spaces to the front of this building. The area you see to the lower left is right now Dollar General's in there. So we haven't addressed exactly how many incubator spaces we can fit in there because we're probably talking that that's a couple of years down the road in this situation. If the incubators do well, then I, I would say no reason why they would not continue that business on down through there. They're small three hundred square foot units. I did respond back to the Mableton, as well as to Mr. Porter, and tell you that those, those units would be accessed from, from outside, from outside the facility, and, and, and that is the expectation.
Okay. Okay. With regard to Dollar General, I think you've said that they've given their notice that they're moving out of the.
They've only said that they have no intention of renew, that they don't intend to renew. However, there are still several years left on that contract. So hopefully, at this point in time, they'll stay in for some period of time, allowing the self-storage to fill up, and then at that point in time, they can make the decision as they move out, whether more self-storage is warranted, or if the retail markets got better, the facility could start going back a different direction. So they're just trying to bring some revenue in on this until this area can find some new legs.
Sure. Now, you were going to get me a number on total square footage that was going to be for self-storage.
We currently have, there's thirty thousand square feet upstairs, twenty square, twenty thousand square feet downstairs. Typical efficiency, we have not done the full floor plans on this property, but typically our efficiencies are going to run between seventy-five and seventy-eight percent of that, of that square footage is actual rentable square footage. But we have twenty thousand square feet downstairs, thirty thousand square feet upstairs.
Okay. Okay, and that's out of, what's a total square footage for the building again? Do you know? If you don't.
Not without, not without the survey in front of me.
Okay. I forget exactly what it was as well.
I believe the Dollar General's taken up.
Okay. We just looked at thirty thousand two hundred and twenties, the total footprint of the building on the survey, so you're not really talking about thirty thousand, well, you're talking about thirty, you're not really talking about thirty thousand upstairs for self-storage.
And not until, not until Dollar General's out, if, if and when that occurs, however that doesn't happen. They're, they're currently taking up, I believe, about six thousand square feet. There is some unusable square footage in, in that building as well, to point out, it was previously a theater.
Yeah. And do they have a basement under their portion?
No, they do not. That's why it's only twenty thousand square feet below.
Okay. Okay. Because I know that's, building's been added onto and all kinds of stuff, so it's hard to, to figure out the configuration.
Oh, and, and one last thing. This is the, just because I think it helps you in the discussion, you had mentioned the dock. There, you see the upper dock there to the left of that picture, and then there's some convoluted dock.
Right.
That's the portion that, that we even in the letter said that we expected to remove that portion of the dock and, and create a green space there in that area.
Okay, great. And I know also I should comment in the letter, the email, you stipulated to repainting everything that wasn't a brick surface on the building. Is that?
Basically, everything on that building will be refaced except for the brick areas.
Right. And you had talked about removing, possibly removing the rear staircases, or?
With the, I do have a picture of how bad they look. They are terrible.
Yeah.
And part of this is, is part of our discussion with, with this developer is that we have to create an atmosphere on this facility, or they're not going to have any success, you'll be throwing their money away. One of the things that, that among others that needs to be, that needed to be addressed is it has a rear walkway across the back of the building that is very ugly. With the use of self-storage, due, because of egress, what we can do with egress, we can remove that rear walkway and, and infill those, infill those exit, those, those egress points and make it look much better.
Okay. Okay. And of course, you'll work with the fire marshal to figure out if you need to have a certain number of stairways back there for safety purposes, and, and that can be worked out. But, but I do agree that that rear walkway's not in very good condition.
Mr. Brown, how long would it take you to come back to us with some of these details really, really firmed up? Because we don't have enough here, I think, to even vote on, on anything.
And that's kind of where.
On the slough or Z eleven. I think we're, we're just beating our gums for nothing because I'm not prepared to vote on this. We don't have enough. With thirty days, sixty days?
As far as civil, are, are, are we looking for full civil landscape plans?
No.
We wanted approval before we.
Landscaping, I'm not too concerned about, but we need to know a lot more about this building, the layout, you know, and the uses. I mean, we just, we need some stipulations that you and your client provide. We don't have anything now but you standing up here answering questions that Galt throws out to you. You're not ready, and we're not ready to vote. That's pretty clear to me.
Yeah. And I wanted to flush out a few things before we.
I think we flush them out. I think you flush them out later.
Along, you know, if you listen to what, you know, some of the things, and, and one of the things that Mableton Improvement proposed that, that you can consider whether, whether you're agreeable to or, or not, is a formation of a landscape committee to kind of handle that landscaping piece afterward, and that's up to you whether that's something that, that you guys would like to, so you can go back and talk about that, you don't have to answer that now.
Our, our fear, let me just be real blunt about this, is, is the civil engineering, is, is we're quite concerned that we could open up Pandora's Box on this i- if we start making significant changes to the outside of this facility, is, is such as, we've been asked to replace the walkway, the sidewalks, to create islands closer to the road and, and so forth. Some of these things could open up where this project, there is no stormwater detention on this project, and I'm just going to be real honest, is, is if it had to go through a full design, civil design or something like that, it would probably be a killer and, and create a non-feasibility of the project. So, so we're being cautious what we agree to because it could create a situation where we have to totally redesign the, the property, and I don't know if that can be done.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I think anytime you bring a, a commercial piece of property in, number one, this is such a rundown, and so it, it took a strong man like you, I guess, to bring it in when it looks as ugly as it does with the sign, things that haven't been done, doesn't meet the code. And then you come in, and we don't have a detailed plan, and then all of a sudden, I think we're doing a controlled climate, and then I hear, oh, no, we're going to have some retail over here and some retail here, the Dollar General. And maybe we can do something with that sign, but nothing has been done in the six years apparently that he has. So you're asking us to go in good faith of something that we have no idea what you're talking about. We don't have any kind of really good site plan. We need something that shows you're going to remove that loading dock, you're going to remove that building in the back, something that's going to bring it up to commercial code, just like we would require anybody that's coming in for a commercial.
And I will say, they did send me, Bert did send me an email that I noticed wasn't distributed out here, and that's my fault, with some of it. It, it's, there's still a lot of additional things that need to be flushed out in here, you know, a lot of things.
We've tried to give as much detail on that previous, in the one that was sent to you without going through full, full engineering design.
Right.
And, and, and the dock is, the dock is addressed, fencing is addressed, green, the green, the islands and so forth are addressed. The only thing that I can see that I can provide further is floor plans and four side elevations.
And stipulations on staffing and how you're going to control people from living out of their car. You said you can control it, but, you know, we'd like to see some stipulation that says this will be monitored, and if this, the people would be put out, or, or, you know, whatever you can come up in wording so that, you know, it gives the community a good sense that people aren't going to be living out of their cars in this facility, which I know is not your intention, but we also know that things can change, you know, and, and you're, you may not be the person operating it.
Be very clear, I'm not, they are hiring a management company, I'm, I'm familiar with the management company that they're planning on hiring, but, but no, I have, I'm handling the design.
Okay. Okay. So I think, I think what we'll do is, you know, with regard to Z eleven and Slough Four, I make a motion that we hold this until our June hearing. I think we're going to need that much time to, to flush everything out and, and get it done. So that's my motion.
We, we need this cleaned up. We'd love to see this redeveloped. I don't, I don't know that the climate control is, is not a bad thing here, we just need more information. So we have a motion to hold for sixty days. Can I get a second? Did you have anything, Galt? I saw you raise your hand. Okay, now, now we can vote. All in favor? Okay, five zero. So we'll see you in sixty days, and we wish you luck with some good plans. Thank you very much. I've had a request to move, to, to not take a lunch break yet, but to, to move Z twenty-one up and hear it next, and try to do it before our lunch break. I think this is one we can move through quickly, and we have people in the audience that need to leave, and I would like to go ahead and do that if, if, John, if that's all right with you.
Yes, sir.
So let's hear Z twenty-one.
Okay. Resonant case Z twenty-one, Race Track Petroleum Incorporated, request rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of a convenience store at fuel sales in landlot six sixty of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the southwest corner of Canton Road and West through the Way. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z twenty-one? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
She's got a good presentation, but the message is fruit.
I, I've, I've got to say something.
Introduce yourself.
Changing the order was very smart because the next case happened to be on Veterans' Memorial Parkway, and I think people in the audience might have started screaming if you had three Veterans' Memorial Parkway cases in a row. So now we're going to Canton, now we're going to Canton Road instead of.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Huff, give us your name and let's hear what you got to say.
All right. For the record, my name is. Race Track in relation to this rezoning application, and I, there is no opposition, and we've worked very well with Canton Road neighbors, and Carol Brown is here, and the community behind us, she helped facilitate the dialogue with them. So we've got a stipulation later. So I'm, I'm going to kind of go quick, and then additional questions maybe you can ask so, so I don't waste time. The property is an existing race track convenience store, which is shown on that parcel right there. It's zone GC, but it's, it's one of those that's in a neighborhood activity center. Race Track has acquired the property to the north, which has been an eyesore at abandoned gas station for many, many years, and has acquired that parcel. And their intent is to redevelop or rebuild or, excuse me, remodel the existing convenience store. As you are very aware, Race Track's a local company, and they have a, a new prototype, and they are trying to go through the older stores and remodel them so they, they more emulate the, the existing prototype. So that's been on the drawing boards for a while, but what they want to do is get better access, and so they've acquired the property to the north, which allows a signalized access to Canton Road, which will make ingress and egress a lot safer. The only little rub came in that Cobb DOT has long-term plans to, and that's Liberty Hill Road coming in from the east, and it does not align with Westerly Way, which is slightly to the north, and Cobb DOT has long-term vision of connecting those roads so, to facilitate safe access out of Westerly Way. What Race Track has done, and Race Agreement doing, and is contained in my letter dated March thirty-first, is to design a access. Where we will build phase one, which is entering from Liberty Hill Road, and then we will also at the same time, and I, and my letter is not real clear on that, but I, I want to make, make sure it is clear, we will also build phase two at the same time, which will allow interparcial access to Westerly Way, so the residents on Westerly Way can't access that signalized intersection that would be completed with, with phase, as part of phase one. There is one minor error in my letter, in the third paragraph, I, I mentioned that it, about halfway through, it providing access from Liberty Hill Road to the signal, it should say Westerly Way. I confused as which road was which, but this is connecting Westerly Way to the north on down to the signalized intersection. So I think with the, working through that interparcial access that will provide an interim condition that, that might serve the residents long-term, will save the county a whole lot of money to, rather than trying to make those connections work on a public road access. It allows us to spend some considerable sums of money remodeling this store. It will be a significant remodeling. You can see here the changes to the store, and it will include increasing the offerings inside. If you've been into the newer Race Track convenience stores, you'll see that interior-wise, they have greatly upgraded offerings inside, including yogurt and, and fresh sandwiches and such, and so it's, it's, it's something that they're very proud of, and they want to make this store competitive with their, their newer stores, and this will allow them to make that investment, get better access with a signalized intersection, provide interparcial access to, to Westerly Way, and we ask that you approve this rezoning from both these tracks, which will be from GC to NRC, that could be compliant with the Cobb Plan Neighborhood Activity Center designation, and subject to my letter dated March thirty-first. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions you have, unless you want me to go on for the full ten minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Huff, have a seat.
And, and I second Judy's motion to approve.
Okay. This is in District Three, our discussion will be handled by Ms. Tron Betty.
Thank you. There was no opposition. I think Carol is, Brown is here.
I should, for the record, let me just ask to be sure, anyone here in opposition to Z twenty-one? Okay, not seeing and hearing, and it is back to this board. Kristi, you can handle this part, please.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say how much I appreciate all the work that's been done. I think the applicant started talking with Canton Road neighbors, then Chimney Cottages before we met on the project, and then they've also met with Commissioner Burl and DOT to work out some of the questions that were raised about access and things that we could do to better improve that for the people who live off Westerly and in that neighborhood. So I think it's a win-win. Race Track's request that would enable them to remodel the store and improve access resulted in some, some big savings, I think, for Cobb County in general, working together on the Liberty Hill light, and this phase two that they've just shown us. It's cleaning up that corner that we've been looking at for years and hoping that something would happen on, and they're beautifying their current site. So it's really good news all around, and I think they've gone over and above to, to work with the neighbors and do something that the community is, is happy with. So this could have been on consent, I think, but we just didn't get the letter until yesterday, and I think having our work session Monday and the hearing today kind of crunched everything. So I wanted to make sure that we were on the same page. But I'd like to make a motion that we approve Z twenty-one, subject to. The letter dated March thirty-first from Parks Huff, and also suggest that this could be on the Board of Commissioners consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second from Judy, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? It's approved, five zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Huff. Okay, we're going to take a lunch break for about one hour, so we should be back about ten after one. I believe the next case we'll hear will be Z fourteen. Okay, we're back from our lunch break. I just wanted to make a quick announcement. I heard that the Braves had decided not to come to Cobb County. Did y'all heard that? What's the date? April, oh, I'm sorry. April Fools, okay.
You all have to know that we talked about a lot of different jokes, but that was the worst one.
That was the worst one. They wanted me to say some things that I really was not willing to say, so that's the best I could come up with for April Fools. Okay, we're going to get back on track. We want to change the schedule just a little bit and, and allow Jason, I guess you're going to be the presenter, to come up, and we do have one other business item that we'd like have one other business item that we'd like to go ahead and, and get out of the way, so we'll let Jason Gaines come up and tell us what he has for us.
Good afternoon, Chair, and Planning Commission members, I'm Jason Gaines of Cobb Community Development, and- or represent to you today, uh, a case from this past January's annual comprehensive plan amendments. Uh, this particular case was Z D one, zoning decision one, which was in Commission District Four on Atlanta Road. The original, uh, proposal, or, uh, request involved, uh, the change of a single parcel from the low-density residential to the industrial compatible future land use category. You all heard this, uh, back in the beginning of January, later that same month, we went to the Board of Commissioners with all of the, uh, comprehensive, uh, plan amendment requests, and they instructed us at that time to hold this item, and to, uh, look at ways to mitigate, um, um, encroachment by industrial and heavier type commercial uses on residential properties. And we were asked to do so for, uh, the greater vicinity in which this particular subject property was located. So that involved us taking a look at every single parcel along the stretch of Atlanta Road between Pat Mill and Austell Roads that had the industrial compatible future land use category. And with that, uh, we came up with some proposed language to add to the comprehensive plan document as a text amendment. That language reads as follows. "In an effort to mitigate industrial land use impacts affecting adjacent residential land uses, it is recommended that the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners consider additional and enhanced buffering and/or screening requirements on any redevelopment of the industrial properties along the west side of the Atlanta Road corridor between Austell Road and Pat Mill Road." Now, for context, the original request involved one parcel, but since this new request, or this new version of the same request expanded, the, the subject area, we had to re-advertise it as a new public hearing. So, out of the three cases that were held, this is the one that had to come back to you all, because it's essentially a new request, because- this map here with the dark outline shows all of the parcels that are now part of Z D one.
And because this is coming back, uh, to us, this is a public hearing, and I do wanna invite the public that may wanna comment on this to come forward at this time, if you have any comments or questions about this at all, now's the time to speak up. Anyone wanting to comment on Z D one? Okay, Gal, this, you have anything to say, this is in District, primarily in District Four, so, you have anything you wanna add to that?
No, I think we've reviewed it, and I think it, it makes sense, it provides some protection to the residential properties along that corridor, as some of the, you know, industrial uses get expanded or redeveloped, so I think it's, it's good to provide those neighborhoods some additional protection.
It is a good, uh, good idea to do this, and, um, we're glad to bring it forward. Jason, do you have anything else for us?
Just wanna say that we did get a few phone calls from residents who received notification letters, some of the affected properties that are in the I C, future land use category are actual residential uses, so, we, we did receive a few phone calls from, from those folks, and we reassured them that this didn't affect, um, you know, the use of their property or their property rights, so everybody seems to be, um, you know, at ease regarding this.
Doesn't change any zoning categories, this is strictly a Cobb Plan Amendment.
Correct.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, that we recommend approval of Z D one.
A second, any other discussion? All in favor of passing this on to the Board of Commissioners recommending approval? Please vote, okay, that's five zero, thank you, Jason, very much.
Thank you.
Get back to our regular schedule, Mr. Peterson, what is next for us, please?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, rezoning case Z fourteen, Koe Kintai, request rezoning from O S and N S to L I for the purpose of- the eighteenth district. The property is located on the north side of Veterans Memorial Highway, west of North Allen Road, the applicant represents him as present, is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z fourteen? Let the record show there's one person opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good afternoon, for the record, my name is Parks Huff for the Law Firm of Sam's Larkin Huff and Valley, and I represent the applicant Koe Kintai in relation to this rezoning application. Uh, this property, as, as I stated before lunch, is on Veterans Memorial Parkway. I think y'all could split yours day and actually have a day dedicated to Veterans Memorial Parkway and Powell Drive, and just take, do, just do those cases all at one time. But, uh, this is a property that, that is affectionately known as the K O K building, anybody who's driven this corridor, uh, very familiar with it, very large signage on the property, uh, showing K O K on, on the building, and it was a, a successful furniture showroom, uh, warehousing, distribution center, uh, but unfortunately got caught in the downturn and the business closed, uh, and as you can see from the aerial photograph, this is property outlined in yellow with O S. It's a very large, hundred and sixty-eight thousand square foot, uh, building, uh, and so it has been on the market for many, many years, and has, uh, remained, uh, kind of in, in a vacant condition, uh, that doesn't look real good, 'cause you can tell when a building's vacant, it, it, it just doesn't, doesn't look inviting, uh, and it has been a situation where other users have come forward to try to come up with ways to use such a large building. So, uh, to begin with, you start with the premise that this is a large building, and how best to put it to the use, uh, to a good use. Uh, we propose rezoning it to light industrial, quite frankly, because one of the users that, that wanted to go in here as a portion of the tenant, tenancy, was a, a pod storage facility, in the county's opinion, that did not, was not allowed under O S, although I think everyone universally agreed that having pod storage in there, uh, was a good use for the building, 'cause it would minimal impact, uh, but it was not allowed under L I. So, we applied, I mean, under O S, so we applied to L I, for L I, and we actually, uh, have worked with, uh, Mr. Porter, worked with Mabelton Improvement Coalition, and I've got a letter that's just been put on your desk dated April one, which is a tweaking of the previous letter, uh, as we further tweak it, and I think Mr. Porter's gonna tweak it even more, but we're agreeing to keep the property O S, uh, just with adding some, some specific uses, so that we understand what can, what the property can be used for, and the potential tenant, uh, has, uh, a real, uh, good idea of how to use the building with, uh, the size of it not having at all one use, but having part of it as pod storage, uh, uh, the interior side building, there's a, a, a need for parking of vehicles, high-end vehicles, inside, uh, people with collector cars and things like that, there's a, a underutilized market, that portion of the property can be used that for that, uh, and also, uh, there's a, a market for people doing, um, like eBay-type businesses where they need a, a storage unit to be able to, uh, process orders and ship and things like that. So, uh, I think they've got a real good potential use for the property, and we've got this letter dated April first that is crafted, uh, to, uh, address most of the concerns. Uh, it deals with number one, uh, reducing, uh, the signage, and we have, uh, rendering that shows the, the potential signage, and I can put that up here. Of right now, there's a, a mishmash of signage on the building that's kind of a, a little obtrusive, and we would, uh, pare it down to where there'd be a signage at the entrance way, and on the, there, it's an L-shaped building, and on the o- other side, there'd be signage also, but it'd be cohesive signage, and, and one, uh, sign per side, um, and so that, that takes care of the visual part of that. There's also red painted awnings, we've agreed to, to remove the red painted awnings. Uh, the property, if we can go back to the aerial photograph, uh, has- the back left corner, there's a rear loading dock and a rear parking area there, we've got a stipulation, uh, dated, uh, number- thirteen that deals specifically with this, so that we limit, that's the closest to the residents behind us, so that we have limitations on the use of that parking area, uh, that is the only place that we might have exterior, outdoor parking of vehicles, uh, only non-commercial vehicles would be, would be parked back there, uh, then, and we also, if there's an, the loading dock back there is used, there's a limitation on hours and, and size of vehicles, uh, that will, will be a benefit to the neighbors. Um, we've got agreements on including, on improving the landscaping along the perimeter, and fixing up the fencing that, that has, uh, failed, uh, and so I think that with this, I think you've got, uh, something that will allow the building to be, uh, u- utilized in, in a successful manner and occupied. Um, I know that there is a, someone here in opposition, I, I think she lives up North Allen Road, uh, which is the road to the, to the east of the property, uh, and I wanted to point you, I, I think her concern is noise, and, and making sure that we don't have an, an impact on adjacent property owners, and condition number two, which is, is anything that i- any assembly done inside, would be done inside the building, and would not have any noise, odor, uh, emanating from the building, and all that is built into the O S ordinance also, so it's also covered in, in the O, the O S ordinance. So, um, I think that, that you've got an opportunity for a building that has been for sale for quite a bit of, long period of time, to be able to be put to good use, uh, where it won't sit vacant any longer, uh, and being able to divide it up into s- to smaller users interior-wise, so that you've got, you know, you're not trying to fill up a hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet of, of use, which would, would push it to being a rather intensive, um, warehousing, distribution facility, uh, this is the way to go. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, uh, the potential tenant is also here to answering any specific questions that, that might come up, uh, but we ask that you, uh, follow, um, the stipulation letter with some minor tweaking, uh, that we've discussed with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition, and Sonia Wheatley was here with Mabelton Improvement Coalition to speak in, in favor of the conditions that we negotiated, uh, but she had to leave for, for work, and so she's not able, wasn't able to say, but I think she expressed her support to Mr. Porter, so, be glad to answer any questions that you have, and, um, regarding the proposal, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huff, uh, let's hear from the opposition at this time. Thank you for your patience, I know you've been sitting here a long time.
I'm Marjorie Spears, I live on fifty-eight thirty-one Southeast Allen Road, and, uh, I, uh, moved there in nineteen fifty-nine, at that time it was a residential area, and I still think of it as a residential area, even though it, it doesn't seem to be that anymore, but I, uh, I would be eighty-two years old April the nineteenth, excuse me, and I started to work about years ago when they had the small salaries, and I worked for this company for thirty-one, thirty-two years, and we were, the company kept being bought and sold, bought and sold, bought and sold, not realizing when I retired that I wouldn't have much of a income, but, uh, either way, and then of course the cost of living raise was long before, after I retired, and I just don't have the money to move otherwise. Now, this past week, about quarter till three in the morning, I don't know where it was coming from, but there is also another building there in that same block where the, um, the K O K building is, and the man owns that same building. They do operate, but now, I don't know that this noise came from there, but about quarter till three, one ni- one morning this week, not every morning, but just this particular morning, I heard a plundering. Well, finally it sort of quieted down, and then that was fine. About quarter till five, I heard another plundering, and then after a while I heard a big truck leaving there, and then about five, ten, fifteen minutes later, I heard the alarm system go, I'm assuming it was a burglar alarm system go off. Uh, I'm just a very light sleeper, like I say, and I can't help it, but, uh, then I know, uh, about two weeks ago, I heard the noise, I called the police department, and I told them, they said, "Well, what does it sound like?" I said, "I don't know what it sounds like," I said, "I guess you'd say a lawnmower," but I said, "This is like ten-thirty, eleven-thirty at night," and I said, "I guess it would sound like a lawnmower, but I really don't know what that was." So, they came along, and I was watching, and I saw this car come around, getting real low, real slow, once it got there though, the people had already quit cutting, they were cutting grass, but, anyway, and they, the car went on down, and then it turned around and came back, well, they had quit, but then they didn't realize he was gonna come back, and sure enough, I looked out, and there this lawnmower was, with the lights on, cutting the grass at eleven-thirty at night. And then another night, uh, of this was been, a good several months ago now, I heard the noise on the radio, and it just kept blaring out, and this was late at night also, about eleven-thirty, eleven something, and I called, and I said, "Well, uh, you know, I don't know what this, uh, it's a radio," and I says, "I don't know where it's coming from, it's so loud, I don't know whether it's across the street, I don't know whether it's down there, whether it's on the back of the street or what." This, this was residential area where this was happening, so sure enough, they came about thirty minutes later, and it quit, and I hadn't had any more problems with that. But, uh, either way, I just, and I know when K O K operated that building before, sometimes as much as two or three times a night, sometimes their burglar alarm system would go off, and it was shrill, well, this other burglar alarm system went off, which I'm assuming that's what it was, it was not that, not loud, but it was just shrill, and it's, it would just keep us awake all the time, and the people that lived across the street from them kept complaining and complaining about it. Well, now, one's dead and gone, and one's in a nursing home, and all that property up through there on Veterans Memorial House, House, Veterans Memorial Highway has been sold, our people, you know, they couldn't stand all the noise, so that's the reason so much property is available up there on Veterans Memorial Highway. So, anyway, that's just, uh, and I, like I say, I can't help it that I'm such a light sleeper, but on top of that, I can't afford to go somewhere else, so I'm just, and also I noticed on here, it says that the time, the, uh, undetermined at this time, the hours of operation, well, I, I feel like something needs to be done, definitely about the hours of operation. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Spears, is it, anyone else wishing to speak to, uh, this particular case, Z fourteen? Okay, not seeing and hearing any, it's back to this board, Mr. Gal, this is yours, I believe.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Let's see, yeah, we've worked on this one quite a while, as you'll notice, we've had a couple of continuances, but I think it was all good progress, uh, we even had a long conference call yesterday just to try and work out the final issues, so I wanna, uh, thank the applicants for working diligently to meet the community concerns, and as evidenced by a new STIP letter today. A few comments on the property, one is this property has very limited parking, uh, just the way it was developed, you know, you can see the property's almost all building, uh, with a little bit of parking. At one time, the property was owned with the one next door, and the N R C portion was all under joint ownership at one time, so there is some room for expansion. So as we were looking at this, and let me say, the, uh, applicant has a unique use for the property, it really gets down to some of it, a warehousing kind of use, uh, one of the tenants will be the people in the building next door, one would be the pod storage that, uh, Parks mentioned, uh, the other is almost like incubator spaces, or, or, or at least service for small businesses that might need a thousand to five thousand square foot of warehousing, uh, so that they can do fulfillment and things like that, so they'll have UPS trucks picking up will be the biggest thing, or FedEx, or, or something like, like that, and then there'll be an office component with it, where those, especially the smaller tenants may have a little bit of office space, and then some shared, uh, resources, like, you know, copiers and conference rooms, and, you know, basic business services there available to them, so I think it will be a good, uh, service to the community, because it's often hard for a small business to find something while they're getting off the ground and, and moving up, because the other unique thing is that they're gonna offer month-to-month kind of leases, so these people don't have to make a long-term commitment on those smaller spaces, and oftentimes when somebody goes out, you know, in commercial, they want a three-to-five-year commitment, uh, and that's tough for a business that's growing to say, "I'm gonna sign a lease for this small space, and I may need something bigger in two years," or if the business doesn't work, "I may need nothing." So, so I think that's gonna offer a good thing, but, but our struggle, one of the struggles was dealing with parking, and with the small incubator kind of things, the parking's gonna be a little bit more intense than just the basic warehousing need, uh, that you'd find if the whole thing was just being used as warehousing. being used as warehousing. Also, the office component adds a little bit. So one of the things we did is we kind of looked at the parking. I think right now, the parking's only, on the site plan that we received, only had fifty-five parking spots, which was under what the staff had calculated the need. And they had calculated the need based on a warehousing use, not these varied things. And I forgot to mention, one of the other uses that Parks mentioned was storage of high-end vehicles. So as we looked at the parking, and some of it, I looked at what's on the site plan, some of those parking spaces that are on there right now are not legitimate parking spaces because there's things like air conditioners sitting in half the space. And also, some of the spaces don't, the way it's drawn, don't meet the minimum standards for width of the, you know, aisle way and things like that. But we did look hard at it without actually putting together a parking plan. And it looks like there's room to add some parking. And my rough calculation, I got to around seventy-six parking spots without too much effort. And I think somebody designing it out could get to around eighty. And I think that's a more reasonable number. You know, depending on how you calculate the various uses in that, I calculated that they could use eighty to like a hundred and ten range potentially. But some of that hundred and ten was with more office space. So what we did is we agreed to limit the office to about twelve thousand square feet so that we don't have a case where they're going to have twenty-six thousand square foot of office, which is what one section of the building is with the mezzanine. It's thirteen thousand downstairs, thirteen thousand, you know, above. And that would have just thrown the parking way out of whack. So that was one of the things. The other real concern we had is in the northwest corner, there's some loading docks. And our concern was trucks pulling in and out of there so close to this neighborhood. And, you know, honestly, the fence that's there and that doesn't do a lot to screen it because of the topography and the height of the houses in back. So we were trying to think if there's a less intense use that may fit with their model of storage of vehicles. And we thought, you know, give them an either or. If you're going to use those back loading docks as loading docks, then this paved area in the back corner needs to stay open and available because you need it for truck movement. But if you're willing to close down those loading docks, then let's give them some other use for that piece of property back there. And what we thought of was, you know, recreational vehicles like travel trailers, motor homes, boats could be stored back in this area that wouldn't have a big impact on the neighbors because people aren't coming in and out every day. We said no semi-trailers, no semi-trucks, anything like that. We did allow a small allowance for commercial vehicles under twelve thousand five hundred pound gross vehicle weight rating. That is ancillary to a tenant in the building. So somebody may have a box truck or something like that that they use in their business. It's not going to be in and out and it's not going to be just running parking to commercial vehicles, but somebody who's, you know, has space in the building to park back there. So that's one of the issues that we kind of addressed. But, you know, one of the nice things is we've been able to work through all the issues with the, that have come forward. And, you know, if they use those rear loading docks for tractor trailer, the hours will be limited so that it's not too much of a nuisance on the neighbors in behind. And I will note that the neighborhood was built after this building. So the people buying it could look out their window when they were buying the house and see that they're buying next to a big warehouse. But we still want to provide them some level of protection. So that's, you know, with regard to parking, we think they need about eighty. And what I'm going to do is allow the ability for the district commissioner to make a minor modification. If they draw it all out and they can only get to seventy-seven spaces without really being a problem, then they can look at that and see if that's, you know, a reasonable We have another, the applicants also agreed to a architectural and landscape review committee so that they can look at the landscaping. Some of the old landscaping has died and needs replaced. Also, you know, there was mention of the awnings on the building with some red thing and maybe possibly repainting the buildings entirely. So those were things that they agreed to look at with the review committee. And I think that's a good, you know, step in that to solving that issue. So what we've done essentially is by leaving this in OS, and you'll see there's a small slice of NS that is being zoned to OS. But by leaving this in OS, OS is a special exception allowed within a neighborhood activity center. So we aren't going against the land use plan. And the exception of having pod storage because we think that's a rather, you know, low intensity as far as warehousing goes business. So I think that makes sense of what's been done. So I think there's a lot. Now, we just got a STIP letter today, so when I make a motion, I'll be making some changes to it because we didn't get it all refined. And I'm going to guess that Parks may revise the letter again before it gets to POC, just to clean up a few things that got missed in doing this.
I would ask you to look at number thirteen in particular.
Okay.
I made a note as I was just scanning through this, that the wording of that entire thing is, well, I wrote down ambiguous, but it's just not clear what the hours of operation will be. And to Ms. Spears' point, we're going to allow them to operate as early as six AM and as late as eleven PM.
Well, actually, those hours are not the hours that we discussed and we're going to be marking those out. But keep in mind, those hours are only on the rear docks. And I guess I might have a question because there seems to be some concern about overall operation. If there's some reasonable limits, we can put on the front loading docks that kind of front Veterans Memorial.
That's where I'm going with that. But I did, the wording of that is just, to me, is not clear at all.
Right, right. And some of that hours and days, I was going to have to correct that. That's one of the things that we discussed yesterday that didn't quite get in this new letter. But point well taken on that.
And no grass cutting at ten-thirty at night.
I don't think there's any grass to cut on the entire parcel.
No, there's not.
So that's not an issue. You won't get the lawnmowers from this parcel.
You won't catch me on a ride anymore at ten-thirty at night. Okay, I'm sorry, Gault.
Yeah, so I think that was the one thing that I heard that we may want to address. So if Parks could come back up and maybe address that.
The overall operation, we'd be limited six to, six AM to eight PM. That'd be the front portion of it, which is, you know, facing, you know, shields, faces towards Veterans Memorial, very removed from residential.
Okay. That's something.
Is that hours of operation, including deliveries and pickups and, okay.
And I could have, I could have mentioned them having some.
And then the portion Gault was referring to, which I take it, is the northwestern section?
Yeah.
The hour, you want the hours there to be different?
Correct, because that is right next to residential. And we wanted to be sensitive to that. And the hours are going to be Monday, Monday through Friday, was it seven to eight?
Seven to eight, Monday through Friday, nine to five on Saturday, and twelve to five on Sunday.
I still think thirteen is poorly worded, I'm sorry. But it says, the property will not receive, will not receive deliveries outside of the hours of six AM and eleven PM. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay. I got you, I got you, okay.
Right. And part of the OS district is they're not allowed to emit noise outside of the building if they're doing anything. So we didn't really talk about limiting actual, you know, if somebody's in the office space doing something or that on the building. But just the deliveries are going to be the noisy stuff, I think, regarding to the building. Okay, any other comments before I make a motion? I know Judy must want to say something. I know. I know she is. I know what that look is. Okay, thank you, Parks. Okay.
Mama Judy keeps it straight.
Yeah. I make the following motion regarding Z fourteen to recommend deletion to OS subject to all the following. All staff comments and recommendations including zoning, fire, planning, water, sewer, stormwater management, and transportation, not otherwise in conflict. The site, to the site plan dated November second, two thousand and fifteen, with the note that the parking plan, that a parking plan will need to be prepared to increase the number of parking spaces and remove substandard parking spots. And, okay, a stipulation, all stipulations in applicant's attorney's letter from Parks Huff dated April first, two thousand and sixteen, not otherwise in conflict with the following modifications. Item number three, delete the last sentence, which reads additionally, the required parking shall be reduced from sixty-three to fifty-five spaces. On item number seven, we're going to add in, in the sentence that says the dumpster shall comply with Cobb County code, we're going to add to then to that end development standards. And then I want to change the wording on the rest of that sentence to say, the dumpster enclosure will be brick-faced or other materials approved by the Architectural and Landscape Committee. So that if they want to do something else, it will be approved. And let's see, then, going back on item number three, which we deleted the last sentence, but on the second sentence, we want to add to the end of it with a line of demarcation between parcels. Because there's a concern, we want to be, we want code enforcement to know what's on what parcel, in case there's issues. Let's see, did that one, that's covered. Okay, item number eleven, it says the red trim will be painted to match the building. I want to add, or color approved by the Architectural and Landscape Committee. And also to the second sentence, I want to add, or color to be approved by the Architectural and Landscape Committee. With regard to number thirteen, trying to decide if I might be, whether we want to add that, where it currently says hours of six AM to eleven PM, we want to change that to seven AM to eight PM. And then Monday through Friday, and then Saturday, nine AM to five PM. And the Sunday hours are fine as is. And then we want to add a sentence that the hours of delivery for the rest of the parcel shall be limited to eight AM, or six AM to eight PM. And then on the sentence in the same bullet, where we talk about parking in the back lot of RVs, we'll say it's also to limit to vehicles, commercial vehicles of less than twelve thousand five hundred gross vehicle weight rating as an ancillary to a tenant with at least a thousand square feet of space in the building. Okay, moving on to, to item number sixteen, and I may need to explain because it's a little confusing to read. It says that COs will not be issued after a hundred and eighty days if all the landscaping and other things aren't done. I just want to make it clear, we don't want to limit them and make them get all the landscaping before they can get the first CO to get a tenant in there and start making money. So I'm just going to add a note that COs can be issued during the initial hundred and eighty-day period, just to make it clear. We just don't want, if this building sits empty for some time, somebody coming in to pull COs and not have done all the other stuff that's required first, just in case they don't close on it or there's delays. I want to drop item seventeen in its entirety, which was to comply with DOT recommendations upon redevelopment of the subject property. I think the only impactful one is the donation of right-of-way because everything else is staying as is. So I don't see a need to, to push that on down. And that's my modifications to the letter. And then I have a few other stipulations. We want to be clear and align the permitted uses to what categories are allowed under permitted uses in OS because some of these aren't real well-defined, that Parks has in his letter. So I'm just going to pull out ones that are in the permitted uses. Assembly, automotive parking lots or garages because they're going to store cars inside. Corporate or administrative offices, office service and supply establishments, parking for vehicles, wholesale trade and distribution facilities, wholesale trade, office in conjunction with office showrooms, display, and other facilities. A special exception for the storage of self-storage pods. And that's just the pods, not an actual self-storage facility. And a special exception for outdoor storage of recreational vehicles in the limited area defined, which will be defined below. The following activities are expressly prohibited. Automotive dealers, brokers, or wholesalers. Overnight parking of semi-trucks, semi-trailers, shipping containers, pods, or vehicles with a gross vehicle rating over twelve thousand five hundred pounds unless parked at a loading dock on the southeastern portion of the building, which is the front. Assembly halls and religious services, clubs or lodges, storage and sales of guns, knives, or other weapons, and automotive truck service repair and bodywork. Those were prohibited uses. Moving on to parking, a minimum of eighty parking spaces shall be provided. A parking plan, which is prepared by a licensed engineer and certified to adhere with Cobb County ordinances, the plan to be submitted to the zoning division manager for approval. The parking islands directly in front of the building may be reconfigured within the front area as long as the total area of the islands remains the same. That's because they need to do some, to get rid of some of the substandard parking and the clearance issues. And I'm just going to add a clerk's note for future reference that some of the spaces shown directly adjacent to the front of the building do not comply with county ordinances. They have air conditioners sitting in the spaces and things like that. And some of the aisle ways do not have the proper width and we're going to have trucks going in and out of there. And then district commissioner may modify the minimum number of parking spaces as a minor modification. Next item is there shall be a maximum of twelve thousand square foot of finished area in the building, including any area finished in the mezzanine. This restriction is necessary due to the limited parking availability. The paved area in the northwestern corner of the property may be used for storage of recreational vehicles such as travel trailers, motor homes, and boats, as long as the loading docks on the southern side of the building are not used. Additionally, commercial vehicles with a gross vehicle weight rating of less than weight rating of less than twelve thousand five hundred pounds may be parked if the vehicle belongs to a tenant of the building with at least one thousand square feet of rental space. I think I already covered this one in the, in the STIP letter, that's something that I added, so I can drop off that last one, because we already put that in. So, that's the motion. Finally.
Hold on, wait a minute, we have a motion on the table, let's get a second, then we can have discussion. We have a second, we have discussion. Who wants to go first, Judy, Skip?
I, I just have a question. I, I just want to make sure you referenced the right site plan. You said you gave a date in November, and the one I have, I think, is dated December third.
It may be that I used the... Okay, this is the received date, and I referenced the, the date, so we can also modify that to say received by the county on December third, two thousand fifteen. I had the big plan out when I looked, and forgot to look in the book, so I used the date it was prepared.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Just as, just as a clerk's note, I would like to say that I think you, Mike, and you got out to write your letters and submit them to the attorneys.
Now, that wouldn't exactly be legal.
And see if they can correct what y'all recommend.
So, did you have a?
Just, just a clarification, you, you referenced the southern, the parking, the loading dock on the southern, when...
Oh, I meant northern, you're right. You're right, so make that correction, it should be on the northern part. It was a request by Mick that, that they agreed to on the phone yesterday, so.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
I don't know what the rules are on it, but, that was a concern.
Okay, we have a motion, we've had discussion, we have a second. No further discussion, I call for the vote. All in favor? Okay, let's go. What's next, John?
Res zoning case Z twenty-six, BP Clipper Oil, request rezoning from G C to N R C for the purpose of a convenience store at fuel sales in land lots six oh two and six oh three of the eighteenth of Six Flags Parkway, south of Lee Industrial Boulevard, and on the north side of I twenty. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, res zoning case Z twenty-six? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward, be sworn in?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Rainie Cron, I'm here representing BP and S and S Corporation. We are asking that Lake Parkway be rezoned from G C to N R C for the ability to construct a canopy over the existing diesel pumps that are already on the property. The reason, obviously, the diesel pumps are exposed, it doesn't have the cover as the regular pumps, gas pumps currently have, leaving the, leaving the property look unfinished, unbalanced. Providing canopies over the diesel will provide safety from the elements for potential customers. The diesel, the canopy diesel, we are also asking that the canopy can be eleven feet from the right-of-way. It will not impose a hazard to any traffic on Lee, who's that, Lee Industrial Boulevard? That's pretty much it.
You have lots of time left, anything else you want us to know? You're remodeling the store, anything?
We've already done, they've already done a lot of things. I've been here bef, well, not to this one, but for another one, for the sign. They've upgraded the signage, they're upgrading, you know, they've done some things, but right now, they're just trying to get it all balanced and looking, you know, in, in good appearance, where you have like...
So this is strictly about the canopy?
It's strictly about the canopy.
Okay, thank you very much. And just for the record, anyone here opposed wishing to speak to Z twenty-six? If you're not seeing and hearing any, it's back to this board. For a compacted review, Mr. Porter.
Well, let's see, I think the intention to put a canopy over the diesel pumps is good. I think that's something that I'm sure those people who are using the diesel there, which I think they sell quite a bit of there...
It's, yeah, it's like more even than the regular gas pumps.
That's what I figured, given the industrial location of it. One of the things, a comment and staff had here is recommend deletion to T S, which is our tourist services. And the reason for that is, is that this is in an industrial compatible area, and N R C's not an appropriate zoning in that, but T S allows the convenience store and gas station, so it's gonna get you exactly what you need.
Okay, um, yeah, that's fine.
Uh, one of the things I noticed when I was at the property is that there's, the dumpster, first of all, is sitting out unenclosed, so we need to get a dumpster enclosure around that.
I don't think that would be a problem.
Also, there's some fenced areas that have become outside storage essentially, there's old shelving in them, there's old, there's tires back there, there's just a lot of debris. It's kind of on the side that's near the ramps for the freeway. Kind of the back corner of the property, if you think of it that way. Yeah, yeah, so that's something that...
So just get that cleaned up?
I'm gonna ask for those fences to come down so that they don't become a long-term, keep throwing stuff in them, because there's...
I'm sorry, ask for what to be taken?
For the fences to be removed.
The fences to be taken down?
Yeah, because they're just, they're obviously a good way to throw stuff outside, and, that, and... So that's one of the things. I noticed there's a little bit of damage on the building itself, where it looks like a truck hit the facade of the building, and...
It's very possible, um, one of the things, and I don't know if I should be talking about this now, but, with, with the traffic, I know that there was a recommendation to get rid of one of the curb cuts. Well, they've already lost one of the curb cups when, when the construction on Six Flags, and that actually happened after that curb cut got cut, because it's such, you've seen the property, it's so tight in there that those, those curb cuts are imperative for those big trucks to be able to come in there safely and, you know, fuel up and get out safely without having to make those sharp, hard turns around the building.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask that they repair that piece, but we'll bring DOT up here to talk about that curb cut. They recommended the curb cut that's pretty much on the top of the screen be removed, I believe. So, we'll ask them to, to speak to that recommendation here in a minute. But, there are, from the variance case that you came in last year, there were some landscaping requirements that haven't been done yet.
Okay.
So we're gonna ask that those be done before you get a permit to build the canopy. That way, we're assured they get done. And, I think that's...
And I think they were waiting to get this done before they start, you know, with the construction of the canopy to make sure everything that on the property is completed before they get the landscaping done.
Yeah, my concern is, I don't think where the landscaping is, it's really gonna impact the construction of the canopy, because a lot of it's out along Six Flags Parkway.
I'm sure they don't have a problem with that.
So, we just want to make sure we get it done. I, I will note that they repaved the lot, and it looks really good as far as, and I think all the, the variance had asked for was to, to patch and reseal and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and they actually repaved.
They repaved, so that was a nice improvement.
Yeah, they're trying.
And that, so, I think that kind of covered, and, and some of it, I'm gonna ask that, all the debris that's, because even around those fences, there's tires laying around and things like that.
Yeah, I wrote down to clean up.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask for that to be removed in thirty days.
Okay.
So, other than that, I think I might want to bring Jane Strickland up from DOT to talk about this curb cut, so that we can think about it, because as I look at it, it may be difficult if we take that out for these trucks. The diesels are about where that white truck's sitting. It's sitting at a diesel pumps, and it may be difficult for them to get these trucks around that site if we take out that, to, you know, the in and out, they're gonna have to maneuver more around the site, I think, so. I'm wondering whether we create more of a problem than help if we take it out. I want to see what DOT's opinion on that may be, because we didn't discuss that.
Good afternoon, I'm Jane Strickland with DOT. We ask for that driveway to be closed, just due to its proximity to the intersection. It, it doesn't, it's way too close to that intersection, to be honest. And they already have, they already have, you know, two driveways. You know, my thoughts, if they're putting a canopy over the diesel pumps, then, then there'll be enough clearance for the trucks to drive under that canopy, where they will be able to get gas.
Yeah, my thought is getting in and out, they're gonna have to circle through the property potential, you know, circle around, either all the way around the property when they pull out, or they're gonna have to circle to the Six Flags Parkway, and just wondering, you know, whether you think that will create more of a problem with them, you know, we'll have more trucks coming out onto Six Flags Parkway, I guess, potentially.
I mean, that...
Or, or whether we should close that. I'm gonna leave that up to you, and I guess everybody here, but...
Can I, can I just ask? Is, what kind of diesel trucks we're talking about? Just pickup trucks that use diesel, or great big semis?
Well, you're right next to the big cat, you're talking, you're right next to the big cat facility. Big, you know, cat, so I imagine there's a lot of people pulling in probably with, with trailers, with, with equipment on it. You know, larger size, not necessarily semis, but larger size, maybe dump trucks and, and stake trucks and things like that, going in and out of here.
But, that driveway is, I believe, an in-only driveway? So, if you had a trailer and you're trying to come in there and then out the other one, there's not enough room between those driveways for, for a trailer or for a tractor-trailer truck or anything. They're just too close.
Okay, I guess we have to, at least I feel like we need to defer to DOT on that one, is to... Can we do that?
Yeah, we're happy to revisit it at plan review, and look at how they're maneuvering through the site. They can do attorney movement.
Okay, so...
Demonstration.
Okay, we'll just make that part of the motion, that, that that will be reviewed at plan review.
Okay, thank you.
Unless the DOT's determination.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jane.
That doesn't necessarily have to be a part of the motion.
It's part of her comments to close it.
It's part of her comments, and it will be handled at plan review, so...
It says closed, so I want to make sure at least we leave it open at plan review to be considered. Okay, well, I think I'm ready to make a motion regarding Z twenty-six, I make the following motion to recommend deletion to T S for convenience store with fuel sales only. All staff comments and recommendations not other landscaping. Stipulations of the variance from two thousand fifteen to be completed before issuance of a building permit for the new canopy. A brick-faced dumpster enclosure to be built within a hundred and twenty days that meets county development standards. And that's within a hundred and twenty days of Board of Commissioners' final decision. All fenced areas located on the property to be removed within a hundred and twenty days of B O C final decision. And all trash, debris, and outside storage to be removed within thirty days of B O P, B O C final decision. The building and existing canopy to be painted in conjunction with the installation of the canopy, new canopy, so that they match. If they put in the exact same color scheme, then they don't need to paint them, but we want it to all look good. And any damage on the existing canopy or building to be repaired. And that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, second by Judy.
Yeah, you know, I think we could put, you're okay with those stipulations I, right? Are you okay with the stipulations that I read in?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, we could also recommend this for the consent agenda.
We have a motion, a second, it will be added to the consent agenda for the B O C. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion. Okay, five zero, thank you very much, good luck, Rainie, appreciate your help. What's next, John?
Res zoning case Z twenty-nine, M C L Properties, request rezoning from G C to N R C for the purpose of an office in land lot fifty-nine of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the east side of Ostel Road, and then on the south side of Brackett Street. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, res zoning case Z twenty-nine? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'll make it short and sweet.
Your, your name, please?
My name is Lynn Harper, and I'm from M C L since nineteen sixty-one, and primarily it has been a bail bonds place there on Ostel Road, and it was grandfathered in as a bail bonds, and it was vacant for about a year or so. You know, we were approached to have it rezoned, so we were just moving from one category to the N R C in case we wanted to do an insurance business or some sort of small business in, in the house. Okay.
You have plenty of time, anything else you want us to know?
That's about it.
Do you have a tenant there yet?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a tenant for your building yet?
Uh, yes, I do. In the fall, ASAP bail bonds from Glenette County wanted to rent it. While we have been going through this zoning process, he had to seek a location down close to South Cup High School on Ostel Road, but he does intend to come back, if possible.
So it'll continue as a bail bonds?
Yes, it is.
Location, okay. Anything else you want us to know?
That's all I have to say.
Okay, alrighty, Lynn, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And just for the record, anyone here in opposition to Z twenty-nine? If you're not seeing any, it's back to the, you get the gold ring again, golf.
I know, we get all the fun cases today. At least it's not on Veterans Memorial this time. Judy's timing me. Okay. You know, this is, this is one of the typical cases we see of an old house that's been converted to commercial use, lost its grandfathering status, and, and now we need to find a, a good use for it. And that's, that part's pretty straightforward. Now, they applied for N R C, but the staff has recommended L R O, which is, I think, a good category for this, it's low-rise office. And, one of the issues that, that they're gonna have to handle at plan review is DOT has recommended moving the entrance to the driveway back further from the intersection, so they're probably gonna have to move it to behind the house instead of in front. And they may need to move the parking back there as well. So that's, that's one of the issues, the, you know, another issue is, I do think we want to get some landscaping up along the road. They, they have more parking than what they need right now. And it's really kind of a one-way parking where they park on one side or the other. They don't really even have some of it striped, so I think we need to add a little bit of parking, and I'd like to get the signs upgraded to current standards. And, also comment, the back set of stairs is a few steps down, and it doesn't have any kind of handrail, so we need to get a handrail added there. And generally, the property needs to be repainted and rotting wood replaced in that, so. Those comments, I can make a motion unless somebody else has any comments about it.
Please go ahead.
Okay, with regard to case Z twenty-nine, I make the following motion to recommend deletion to L R O subject to all staff comments and recommendations subject to the site plan. With notation that the, the parking is gonna have to be rearranged, so a parking plan to be submitted to the zoning division manager for approval. And the district commissioner approving other minor modifications to the site plan. Let's see, in the, in the front, along the right-of-way on Ostel Road, a eight-foot landscape enhancement strip to be added. All signage to meet current Cobb County sign ordinance. All signage to meet current Cobb County sign ordinance. Building to re, to be repainted the same color or a color approved by the district commissioner. And lastly, to add handrails to the rear steps for safety. And that's my motion.
We have a motion.
Oh, wait a second, one, one more thing, Ed, and recommend inclusion.
We have a motion, second from Skip. Any further discussion, questions? John?
Did y'all wanna check with the applicant to make sure all those are acceptable or?
Okay.
Lynn, can you come back up front?
Yeah, that's a good point before we put it on consent.
Did you hear all of Gault's recommendations? You okay with all of those or any you have questions about?
Uh, yes, except the parking. You know, when Ostel Road was widened, we lost almost everything in the, in. Am I in, you want parking moved to the back?
Well, the DOT has recommended the parking entrance be relocated because it's too close to the intersection. And I can have DOT come up and explain that. They want it a hundred feet from the intersection.
Okay, we're talking about the bracket road.
If you go a hundred feet, it's probably about where the house is, so you may have to move it back. Maybe you can put it and run beside the house. You know, that's something that can be looked at during what we call plan review, where you bring in, here's what I wanna do and they can, you know, review it and see. It is a safety factor to not have entrances so close to an intersection. Even though I know you're not gonna have a high volume of traffic, it's just one of those things that, that DOT always recommends. You heard us just talking about it in the last case, I'm sure, of an entrance too close to the intersection. Sure.
Um, just on that, I noticed that the house is on septic, is that right?
It is.
So that, I don't know where that field is located, but that might complicate the issue of trying to move everything to the back if your septic system is behind the house. I think, I think all of this is not really zoning, it's more site plan.
Right.
Review and permitting.
Yeah, so let's give. Yeah, and I think they can handle that at site plan review, like Jane. So, so when you come in, if you find out, for instance, your septic tank's behind the house and you can't put parking there and you can't find a reasonable way to get parking to the front, then, then I think they'll look at that and give consideration to it. You know, at the time, is that true? I see Department of Transportation nodding yes, so.
Can we just amend your condition to allow the, 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 the district commissioner to approve the final location, the parking lot case? It needs to be changed from one to the other.
I actually think I had said for you to approve it, but, but is that okay or do you want the district commissioner doing it?
Probably better to have the, the district commissioner.
You don't want the blame.
Okay.
Of course. Okay, so I'll, I'll amend my condition so that the district commissioner can approve the final, final parking and driveway entrance location, so that if there's an issue, then, you know, it can be worked out.
Okay, absolutely.
Just so you'll know, plan review is, is what happens if the B O C accepts everything that we've said here. They'll invite you to come back in, sit down and talk to several department heads and all of these little details will be worked out.
Okay, great.
That's plan review. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we, we have a motion on the table.
Right, modified.
Modified motion, second from Skip. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Okay, good luck to you. And added to the consent agenda for the B O C.
Resoning case Z thirty-two, the Stonehenge Group requests rezoning from R fifteen and O N I to R A five and F S T for the purpose of an attached and detached single-family subdivision. In landlot ten thirty of the sixteenth district, the property is located on the east side of La Croix Drive and on the north side of Robinson Road. Is the applicant present? The director said the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z thirty-two? That director shows no one opposed.
Thank you for your patience. You've been here all day. I've seen you sitting out there since nine o'clock. Give us your name and tell us what you're trying to do here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Bill Wyatt. The Stonehenge Group, which is seeking a rezoning of two pieces of property that are adjacent to each other on La Croix Drive. I also have Mr. John Conway here with us today as representative of the Stonehenge Group, as well as Ralph Devia, our engineer. Uh, we're seeking to rezone these two different tracks of property in order to build what is commonly referred to as a step-down parcel. We've got a piece of property that's located on La Croix Drive. Currently, it's got an old house on it, one, one that's falling down. There's also a rental property on it and it's on the western side of the property, across the street. We have commercial properties, north of the property, we have O N I and commercial properties. And to the right or to the east of the property, we have some R twenty residential, a large undeveloped tract. And so what we were looking at doing with this track is putting townhome development on it, which is a traditional kind of step-down between commercial to residential. And track one is two-point-two acres, currently zoned R fifteen. Our requested rezoning is R A five and we're gonna try to put ten lots on the parcel. Uh, track two is currently, at eight-twenty La Croix Drive, it's currently zoned O N I. It is a point-nine-one-seven acre, so it's a very small piece of property. And we've requested a rezoning to F S T, which will allow us to develop nine townhomes on the lot. That will give us a total of nineteen townhomes on the property. Got a picture of what it would look like right here.
Yeah, definitely.
So basically, the F S T is the lots up at the top. Which is currently zoned R fifteen. If you look at the, uh, areas around it.
Bill, use the microphone there.
Okay, if you look at the properties around it, you can see that we've got commercial to the left side or western side of the property. We've got O N I to the north, there's a Wendy's up there, there's a retirement community. And so we believe that this is a good use of the property as a transition between this, between those properties and the R twenty, which has not been developed as yet. This also allows us to do stormwater retention. This property is sort of a little bit uphill of that R twenty area. And if you look there on, on our plan, just to the, uh, eastern part, we've got a stormwater facility. Which would help us control any runoff into that other property. And so we believe that this is the best and highest use of the property. One of the, one of the problems with the property is currently, is there's no sewer out there. And so what we have to do, the developer's gonna have to run about a sewer line from, from some distance, which will cost somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy thousand dollars. That's not particularly important for the rezoning, but I'll tell you why it's important in just a moment. So basically, what we're looking at is we're looking at overgrown rundown properties. We've come up with these brick townhomes, which we believe would be a much better use of the property. So the development would look something like this. And I think that this would be probably the best use of this particular property. People typically don't wanna buy expensive homes right across the street from a shopping center or right behind O N I-type development. And so this is a way to have a step-down, sort of a transition between that higher density development to the lower density, density development of, of, of R twenty. For between the development and the residential property to the east. It allows for an engineering focus on managing the impact of a, there's a lake on the adjacent property, wanting to make sure that we don't do any type of problem, have any problems with that lake. It brings sewer to the property, which raises the property values for all the neighbors, which would allow for further development if that was warranted in the area. For example, the R twenty property could then be developed as a subdivision. Uh, it removes an eyesore building on the corner and improves the area. Uh, and it's, the streetscape sets a high standard for future developments in the area. Basically, in order to have sewer on the property, we have to have a certain level of density. We've seen the staff recommendations and we agree with all of them except for one. The only one that has us a little bit confused or concerned is that the staff had recommended that we delete the rezoning down to R A six. Uh, we've requested R A five on the R fifteen piece and we don't have any problem going to R A six on that one. But the O N I piece, we've asked it for a rezoning to F S T. If you go to an R A six on that one, basically, we lose all the lots. We could get maybe one lot possible, uh, for a total of maybe eleven. Although I think Cobb DOT has indicated that they want us to give them fifteen feet of right-of-way on the southern end of the property, which may eliminate one of those lots. So I think that the problem that we're looking at with the staff recommendation, at least that one, deleting the zoning, is it makes the development unworkable. If the sewer was already there, it's not a problem. But when there's no sewer there and you've gotta spend a great deal of money to bring it in, when you reduce the density down to ten lots, the project becomes somewhat unfeasible. And so we would ask that you take a look at this rezoning, we'd ask that you approve it. Historically, the primary goal of land use planning is to eliminate or minimize potential adverse effects of dissimilar uses next to each other. And so that's what we're doing here. We're actually providing a step-down use between commercial and O N I to what will probably become an R twenty residential subdivision at some point in the future. And so we believe these townhome development is the best way to provide that step-down. This is very similar to some other developments in Cobb County, such as Graystone Village on Hood Road and Cobblestone Development. And that's what we're trying to do, is to come up with some type of a, a step-down use. And so we would ask that you approve our rezoning as submitted and we are happy to agree to all the staff recommendations, other than the deletion of the rezoning to R A six, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Just for the record, anyone here in opposition to Z thirty-two? Cannot see and hearing, it's back to this board. Uh, I, just stay where you are if you don't mind, Bill. Um, I have been out to the site a couple of times, in fact, spoken to the applicant by phone and by email several times and I've taken a look at the site plan. Uh, I do think this site should be developed residential. I don't really think there's any doubt about it. Um, I, I concluded that that should be the case. This area would be, become a buffer, a transition area, as Bill said. Staff even commented the same thing in, in their comments. Uh, between residential and commercial, right across the street on Le Croix, you're looking out at and you're backing up to a Wendy's, a, a paint store, Sherwin-Williams. Uh, to the north, you do have a, a retirement community home there. And several other smaller businesses. I think there's an insurance store. But farther out, out Robinson Road, you have nothing but residential and the farther in you get, the more expensive the homes become. And I've had people out Robinson, please, say to me, please don't let this creep of commercial occur on this lot and get it on down Robinson Road. We don't want that and I don't want that either. So I think that staff's comments were correct. This would became, become a good place or a better place for residential than it would be for any commercial development. And it has been looked at in the past, several times in the past, for commercial, just didn't fly, so I think this is a, a decent plan. I, I'm curious why you did not mention single-family detached homes facing Le Croix. Because that's what was in the plan that I first saw. You mentioned only fee simple townhomes and you showed us this picture. Is that what you're proposing now on Le Croix and on? If we need to clarify, come on up if you need to, you need to be sworn in. Cause I was originally looking at single-family detached homes, that's what your application said on Le Croix. So come on up and explain that to us.
Since John is coming up, I think I said it wrong.
John Conway, Stonehenge Group, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, the, the F S T is on the north tract, the O N I tract. The R A five tracts are detached, single-family homes are joined by a fence.
I, I thought so, but I wanted to be sure because Bill didn't mention any single-family detached.
Yes.
Okay. We, we got it. We've got a set place. Oh, sure, yeah. It's the one he showed.
Are the townhomes rear-loaded? This elevation isn't exactly.
Not exactly.
Representative.
Yeah, the townhomes will be front-loaded, the detached homes will be rear-loaded with alley serve behind the properties.
And I'm, I'm curious, well, we, we don't have any elevations to look at on the single-family detached. How about describing those to us? Square footage, facades, what'll they be built like? Price points?
There, there, we put some information in the stip, stipulation letter. They will be primarily brick-fronted, fronted to La Croix. Uh, the streetscape approach is, is where we see the best use of the land to, people come out of the front door to a sidewalk able to access the local amenities. The local stores, there is.
No, he's, he's not talking about.
Sorry about.
He's not talking about their amenities.
Yes. So they will come straight out to the street with, um, alley access to their garage and to their backyard. The townhomes will be front-loaded garages up front.
I'm curious why, Bill, why you said if, if the F S T, and I, I don't like split zonings, I'll just tell you. They tend to have problems down the road. Why, if we chose to, to leave that, R A five or even R A six, why would that would be a problem for you, John? Why would that be a problem? Do you see that? Can't we still build fee simple townhomes in R A five or R A six?
Well, they're, they're not fee simple townhomes in R A six, they're just attached houses.
Okay, I got you. So it, so then the split zoning would, if, if we let them build what they're wanting to build, that would be a more appropriate zoning?
It'd be more appropriate just to delete, to delete it down to R, R A six, cause these really aren't fee simple townhomes as defined in code. But if you deleted R A six to this plan, then they can build exactly this.
Okay. Yes. The only problem I had with it was the density. As soon as I saw this, in fact, I mentioned, John, to you when we spoke a couple of times about this, was it does look a little dense to me. I'm, I'm surprised we haven't heard from the next-door neighbor, the Mulling family. Um, I know there are children of the original, we've heard from them in the past. They usually stand up and object to whatever's going here. I haven't heard from them, have you?
We haven't.
Okay. Well, no, they are, but their children still live there. And it's a, it's a twenty, twenty-five acre site, beautiful estate lot, beautiful home, big lake on the property. They've always said in the past, and of course, we can't speak for them today, but they've always said they wanna be sure that what goes here, number one, is residential and number two, that they're properly buffered. Explain to me what your buffers will be between this and the Mulling property.
Yeah, one of the, the key pieces to pushing the properties all the way to La Croix, to front La Croix was to give maximum buffer between the back of the properties and the, the Mulling property. We were made aware, um, that, that the Mulling family had been very protective, rightly so, of their property. And it is not an easy, um, lot to develop. There is complications to it. There's a couple of things that, that helped. The, the additional one acre has not always been available. It came to be available at this time, which meant that, that the, the large tract alone is non-viable really to do by itself, which is why it's remained undeveloped. The extra acre gives you the opportunity to do something with it. But as Bill suggested, there is a certain density to justify the engineering and the sewer work needed.
I mentioned to you the last time we spoke that twenty-four, you have two, two townhome widths, twenty-four feet and thirty. Any possibility if we delete one, you could make them all thirty? Twenty, I don't, I don't particularly care for the twenty-four. Gault commented on this in our work session.
Yeah, the, the twenty-four just ends up being a really, tends to be an ugly product and it also tends to create parking issues and there's no green space between units, so it, it just, you know, every place I've seen them, they just don't end up being a good product over time.
I'd like to lose a lot there if we could in order to, to make the width a little better. I think that's, I think Gault describes it correctly.
Just one town home.
Yeah, one town home. I'd like to see one leave there, if that's possible. Um, and as far as the single-family homes, the ten lots, I think that's a little dense. The, on the street on La Croix, you have fifty-foot wide lots. That's it. I mean, and so, well, the last one's on a corner and it's got that rounded shape to it, but, but that, that's really tight, too. If we, if we lost a lot there, it would allow you. R six.
Sure.
A, as far as the square footage of the lots and the width of the lots, I think seventy feet is the minimum lot requirement. It wouldn't get you quite to seventy, but you're a whole lot closer. You're maybe at sixty-five. And your square footage for each lot would then approach R A five.
Sure.
Very nicely. So that, I think that's gonna be my recommendation. Lose a lot of each one.
I think.
You're nodding, is that okay?
If I'm, the, the DOT recommendations may be leading us to lose one of the ten lots anyway. So the, we're potentially down to nine there to begin with.
Okay.
So.
They don't meet any, any of the code. I mean, all these variances are.
There are lots of variances.
Lots of variances.
They might lose one or two if we delete, you know, one from the fee sent from the townhome and one from the single-family.
I have more of a problem, I guess, with the, the F S T density look than I do with the.
Say again?
I have more of a problem with the F S T. I have more of a problem with the FST, uh, FST look.
But they're one of the losing ones.
Yeah, than the actual individual, although I would like to see what they look like, the individual.
Yeah, I wish we had some elevations of the single-family.
Do we know what the square footage or anything?
Yeah, describe, describe the square footage in your single-family.
If, if I could defer to my colleague Ralph from the engineering standpoint.
I can't believe that.
You can't build no 45.
I don't, I don't believe it, yeah.
I'm at 20, I'm at 20.
Yeah, the square footage in your stip letter is questionable. So let, tell us, on your, your single-family homes, let's assume we get down to nine, what would the square footage be offered on those homes? Maximum.
My name's Ralph DeVia. I'm from Grayden Engineering. I believe in the stip letter, the, there were two, I think, in the townhomes, we was 25, was it 2,500? Was the min, we gave minimum.
Minimum 15.
Minimum 15 for the townhomes. I think it was 2,500 for the single-family.
Up to, up to?
Up to 3,500, 4,000 square feet. I mean, that, with the area that we have to build, that would be, we, we would look in that range. To, to meet the price point that we would want to sell at, it would have to be that.
Which is what?
Which is, I think it was 300 to 400 for the, for the single-family, and 250 to 350 for the townhomes.
I think that's doable, frankly. I think that's doable.
DOT's comments did make us lose a lot. We will lose lot number 10, because it's, it's a 15, it's about 15 feet of dedication to the right-of-way, which cuts right into that lot. So you definitely will lose lot number 10.
Okay.
And the sewer is, it's 1,700 linear feet away, I believe. It's, it's, it's quite a distance down Robinson Road.
Okay. Any other questions for these gentlemen? Thank you, guys. Do you want to have a seat, I think, unless you have other questions? John, anything else from you?
I just have one question that popped in my mind for John. Looking at the O-N-I piece, it looks like it's being taken off of the site to the north. Did anybody check that original zoning to the north? If in fact it's being taken off, just make sure that this wasn't a specified buffer or, or, you know, something that restricted it from going out of that site?
What they've looked at, but I think it's a separate lot.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't part of that other zoning that would be an issue. So, appreciate that.
What did you just ask? I'm sorry.
John's going to double-check. I was asking whether, it looks like this O-N-I piece may be coming out of the parcel above, or might have been part of that zoning, and I was just making sure that, that there weren't steps in that zoning above that, that required that buffer or required that space or, or something, to make sure we aren't backing out of some protection that's...
Probably bears checking anyway. We can check.
Yeah, I think we can move ahead, and they can check it before.
Yeah, I think we can, too.
You see?
Well, that is a retirement community. It's a nursing home, actually, right there. That's a nursing home. I shouldn't tell you this, but I'm related to the La Croix's, but we won't, we won't go there. I'm related to a lot of people. Thank you, gentlemen, for your, your approach to this. I, I do think that this should be residential. I like your idea of doing this. I think we can do it all at RA-6. If we lose one of the fee simple townhomes, you're going to be asked by DOT, I think, to lose one of the single-family homes. I think if we do those two things and use your stip letter with just a couple of changes, I think we'll be good to go. If I can find your stip letter. Here we go. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'm going to move approval of Z-32, subject to all... Subject to the stip letter provided by Stonehenge Group dated, I don't see a date. I know when I received it. John, do you have the stip letter? Yeah, get that in a second. Received March 29th? Let's, let's use that. Received, I received it on the 31st. I think you got it maybe a day before. Let's say March 31st, just to be sure. Subject to the stip letter received March 31st. This will be deletion for the entire thing to RA-6, okay? With subject to, let's see here, a couple of changes on the stipulation letter. Appreciate the stip letter. I know we talked about that, and I gave you a few tips, and it looks like you've, you've covered it pretty well. On the very first page where you mentioned Track 1, we're going to change that zoning to RA-6. Track 2, also RA-6 on the first page. Track 1, right down below that, stipulations as follows for Track 1, would be constructing a, a maximum of nine homes instead of 10. We can delete the density, which is the second bullet item. We can delete that. We'll cover that in just a minute. Going over to the second page, let's see. Down to Track 2, we'll have a construction of a maximum of eight townhomes. Also for RA-6 zoning, density, we'll leave that particular item out. We can delete that. Construction of the homes, I think we've got that covered. Sit backs are probably going to change a little. On the last page, I don't know that I got an answer on the, how many homes we could make wider than 24 on the fee simple townhomes. If we can, if we can, I'm not sure you, if you take one off, I'm not sure there's enough to do all of them at 30 feet. I'm going to, I'm going to mention that, and then we can, we can debate that at plan review. So let's add on the last page another item that says townhomes to be constructed with a width of not less than 30 feet, and we'll see where that goes. You can always debate this at plan review. You can debate it with Commissioner Ott before you get to that point. And density for the entire project, I'm not sure what that will be, but it certainly will be closer to RA-6, so it should not exceed six units per acre. That can be another bullet item. Density for the entire tract not to exceed six units per acre. I think that's pretty much it. I think you've got it covered. The rest of it's covered in your stip letter. So that'll be my motion.
Second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Okay, two things. It might be good to ask them to revise that site plan before the BOC and bring one that has nine and, and however many that was.
Eight.
You know, so that they can find out if they can do 30 each and, and have that ready. And also, I would ask them, either if they're not going to have elevations in time for that, that maybe the district commissioner sign off on elevations.
That's a good idea. We can do that as well. Let's add that as a, as the last stipulation, that elevations for the single-family detached must be approved by the district commissioner. Okay? Okay, anybody else?
No.
And, and revise site plan to be available by the district commissioner meeting, which is on the 19th of this month. To, to the revised site plan?
That's right.
Right, right, okay. I don't think so. I don't, I don't think so. I think we leave it and let them discuss it. I think the commissioner's going to want to discuss this, so we, we won't do that. So we have a motion, we have a revised motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.